Hi, everybody. Welcome. I'd like to now call the meeting to order. Could we please start with a roll call?
Of course. Mayor Bagley.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Councilmember Idalgalfering.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Peck.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Waters.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum?
All right. Suzy, would you like to lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. Ready?
Uh huh. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Just a quick reminder to the public, anyone wishing to provide public comment during the public invited be heard section must watch the live stream of the meeting and call in only when I open the meeting for public comment. And so you can't access the meeting at any other time, but that is totally, you'll see a toll free number on the screen right now. And so just watch for the instructions to be displayed when we get to the public invited be heard. You'll call in and then you'll be led into the room according to the last three or four digits in your phone number. So, all right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 27th, 2020 regular session?
So move.
Approval. All right, I'll take that as a motion from Councilmember Christensen, and it was seconded by Councilmember Waters. Any public, any discussion or debate? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion to approve the minutes of October 27th, 2020 regular session is hereby approved unanimously. All right, any agenda revisions, submission of documents, or motions to direct the city manager or staff to add agenda items. Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. We're all aware, we're about to do the final actions on the 2021 budget, and we're all aware of the fact that in that budget, there are no adjustments in compensation for city employees, not to suggest that there might not be. What we've heard from Jim and Harold is that as we get into 2021, as they get a clear picture of what revenues might look like, they might bring to us a recommendation to make salary adjustments for 2021. But as of now, that's not in the budget, and we've heard about potential budget adjustments, and that would, that would, those salary adjustments would be included in budget adjustments if they were to be proposed. So it seems to me that there are a number of ways of compensating staff. One of, one of those ways is with salary adjustments, cash compensation. The second is with time. And we talked about compensatory time, a way to compensate people with time. And I think it will be a mistake if we don't, in anticipation of 2021, ask Harold and, and his HR staff to put together a plan of some kind to use time as a way to compensate staff in 2021, maybe with salary adjustments if they occur, but certainly if that doesn't occur, that the use of time would be one way of compensating staff, which we haven't talked about. So I'm going to move that we direct Harold to put together a plan for the use of time for compensating staff in 2021 in anticipation of what other adjustments might occur during the year, and he can bring that plan back to us if that's appropriate. In fact, that will be the motion to bring a plan back to us for how to use time to compensate staff.
Second.
Thank you, Polly. The universal sign of I cannot hear you. Yes, so there was a motion made to direct staff to proceed with an overall, the suggestion to basically grants city staff an extra workday rather than in the event that there's no money to provide salary compensation for. That about it, right, Dr. Waters?
Well, the motion was a little broader than that.
Go ahead.
A workday, it's not a plan, it might be more than one workday.
Got it, got it.
But to use, yeah.
Okay, so the motion is to direct staff to actually look at providing staff additional time off is part of their compensation package this year. That, that, that the motion?
That's the motion.
All right, it was seconded by Councilmember Christensen. Seeing no further, Marcia? Oh, sorry, it was seconded by Councilmember Martin and thirded by Councilmember Christians. And so Councilmember Christensen?
I think it should say a paid day off. Otherwise, a day off is, you know.
All right, a paid day off, as well as, I assume the motion also means any other ideas that would be really good for staff that wouldn't cut into your budget. So we're willing to hear any and all ideas. Councilmember Idalgalfering?
So, and yeah, I had a conversation with Dale about this issue as well. And so, and it's not off the table then during the course of the year as numbers, projections come in to reevaluate. So, you know, they're given the comp time, but then to reevaluate if adjustments can be made on the salary schedule?
That was a premise of the motion.
So, yeah, I want to make sure that it's, that that's still in place and.
Yeah, that's, that's consistent with what we talked about in our budget message based on how we see performance as we continue to move forward.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure if it's something that needed to be included writtenly in the, in the proposal or in the motion.
I thought it was in there, but I may have misheard it.
Okay.
You go back and listen to tape. In addition to potential cash compensation, not knowing what that's going to look like, that we authorize the management team to put together a plan to use time, compensate staff with the understanding that, that there may be salary adjustments as well in 2021.
So basically, I'm taking the motion to mean Harold, you have the green light to discuss compensation in terms of time off, paid time off, salary increases. You've got our blessing. Enjoy. You are the executive over HR. Proceed.
We'll bring something back to council.
All right, and I believe that was a consensus. Anyone, anyone here not in agreement with that motion? All right, you've got a consensus vote mandate, move forward. Councilmember Peck?
I think we should take a vote.
All right, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. It is still consensus unanimous, but now it's official.
That's right.
All right, now it's official, official. All right, thanks, Dr. Waters. All right, anything else, guys? Councilmember Idalgalfering?
So I'd like to direct staff to get an update on, and let me, on what's going up, what's going to happen or what, where the status is on the North Main Street corridor. You know, there were a lot of plans in the works for, in the comp plan. You know, I've, since COVID has started, I've tried to been, trying to, tried to keep connected with some of the businesses, just often ones that I frequent. But, you know, a lot of people have noticed that things are kind of happening south and downtown, and, you know, we have the Longmont Downtown Authority and that, and they, they manage, they oversee that and look at those pieces, and they're doing a great job, but I want to make sure we don't forget about the north.
All right, well, actually, I, Harold, can we just, I don't see you, Harold. Stop playing your games, eating your Twinkies. I want, like, like I tell my kids, how, how does the teacher know you're paying attention if I can't see you, Harold? No, the, I'm kidding, you can go dark anytime you need to, Harold. No, but can we please just manage prerogative, just put a five minute, just a five minute update on the next, at the next council meeting or whenever you can? Just what's going on with North Main? Because I do see a lot of, there's construction going on. Why don't you just let us know what's going on?
Yep.
Did you do that?
Yep. I work with Joni and Erin, and we can do that.
All right, cool. Good enough, Councilmember?
Yeah, and then include any of the parks. I know we already did some updates on car park. So that was, and that meant a lot to a lot of the folks in the neighborhood who walk to that.
Make sure, let's include the car parks too, Harold.
Let's include the parks that are kind of getting neglected, so.
Let's include them.
Appreciate that.
All right, cool. All right, anybody else? All right, let's go ahead then and move on to first, sorry, special COVID update. Harold, we have a guest tonight, right?
Yeah, we have several guests actually tonight on this. And there's going to be a fair amount of information that we're going to go through, but the first guest, I'm going to ask Scott Cook to come on, and Scott has a special guest with him. One of the things this is really attributed to is council's motion on the restaurant vouchers and how that's taken off. And so Scott's going to give you all an update and talk about how that's being expanded based on donations. So Scott, take it away.
Sure. Thank you, Harold, and good evening, Mayor Bagley and City Council. As Harold said, I'm Scott Cook, I'm the CEO of the Longmont Chamber, and I'm joined this evening by Ashley Sherman. She is with the North Main Walmart store. So the Chamber has been working with Sandy Cedar and her staff on the Strong Mott Restaurant Voucher Program. This is a program that was put forward by City Council to distribute tokens to families around the community, and then those tokens can be used at the local restaurants. So this is a unique program that helps those, both those in the community, of course, and then our restaurants. Of course, both, both of these groups have been heavily impacted by the pandemic, so of course it's a win-win for a lot of people. In the first round, we had just over 50 restaurants that participated. And in the second round, which we're working on now, we'll have just over 60 participating restaurants. We've only received positive feedback from the restaurants that are participating, and in turn, they've let us know that they've received a lot of positive feedback from those that are using the tokens. Many of the tokens have been used for special celebrations, for family nights out, or family nights in, because it is a pandemic, so many people pick up their food and go home with it. And throughout this pandemic, Walmart has been a partner to the Chamber and in this community, so we want to let you know that. Walmart has assisted our small businesses with their game day marketplace, which they held at the Highway 119 store. And then they've also contributed to the Chamber Unity Funds, the Community Fund, which we keep at the Community Foundation. All of those proceeds go to area nonprofits. And Walmart also loved the idea of the restaurant voucher program and has now donated 4,500 to the program. So this will help us reach more residents and more restaurants. So I wanted to let you know of the success of the program so far and to let you know that we have one more partner in the program with Walmart. And so I'd like to, if Ashley is still here with us, Ashley Sherman, like her, to be able to say a few words from the North Walmart store. Ashley?
I think Scott and everyone. Yeah, so we have really partnered with the Chamber to, to donate our, you know, our money in our budgeted funds. And being able to provide to the community is something that is really core to me and to my management team and to Walmart as a whole. So it's been a really good partnership, like I said, with the Chamber. Last year, it was the unity. And then this year, you know, like Scott said, we have donated quite a bit to the, those, the Strong tokens for trying to support the food and all of the, all the families that are in need. So we are here for the city of Longmont and any other needs that, that you guys and everyone has.
Great, thank you, Ashley. And I just wanted to again thank the city of Longmont. Thank you, City Council, for putting this program together. If there's questions about the program and the Chamber's role in that, please let me know. We're, like I said, currently working on the second round, and that will go through December 31st. So thank you, Harold.
So Mayor Council, you started with, I believe it was 10,000 you all put into this. We put another 10,000 in from the CARES funding and then added the, I guess, 4,500, so 14,000. So the idea for this program is definitely taken off, and we hope that others are interested in continuing to support it and continue to grow the program. So thanks for the idea. There's a hand up.
Dr. Waters?
Yeah, I just, I want to acknowledge, this was Councilmember Peck's proposal. And I, and I don't know that any, that I didn't have a sense of what a good idea it was at the time. It obviously was a great idea. And I'm sitting here enjoying, even as I'm listening to a voice message I received from a constituent. We all get a lot of incoming correspondence, voice messages and email. Seldom do I get messages saying, thank you for, for what you've done. And I can take no credit in this, but Joan, I ought to forward this to you, because it is a constituent telling me how deeply grateful she is and, and how honored she felt in the establishment she went to, to redeem that token. So good on you.
Councilmember Christensen, and then Councilmember Peck.
Well, it's like, it looks like Polly has decided that she wasn't going to speak. So thank you for those kind words, Councilman Waters, but this wasn't, this was council's idea. We do nothing other, without a majority vote. So, so thank everybody, and I hope we can.
Let it be, I'll take that as a point of order, and everybody is hereby thanked. Everyone is thanked. All right, Harold, go ahead.
So, yeah, it was a great idea and, and a classic team effort with the city, you know, Councilmember Peck coming up with the idea, council members coming in, Sandy and staff working with the Chamber, also working with the Tinker Mill who made the tokens. And so you're really seeing multiple groups come together to work, and that's how Longmont rolls, is we do things as a community and coming together. So again, just another example of our great community. That's good news to start off with. Definitely seen a lot of changes in the COVID world. The first thing that I want to do, Susan and I have actually been texting, we're going to start off with a video. So Eric, I believe you have the video. The governor, before you pull it up, Eric, I want to talk about a couple of things. We received some correspondence from DOLA. Also, I also received correspondence from the state and the governor's office. The governor's really, for the state employees, they've announced that state employees in level orange or level red counties will work remotely for the month of November in those, except for those critical government functions who cannot perform job duties remotely. And they're asking other local governments to join in on that. Excuse me, the coffee's, I'm talking back to me right now. So we're, we're going through that and evaluating the situation right now. And I wanted council to know that we are working to trim our numbers down as an organization to, to come into compliance with the, with the state orders and what they're asking local governments to do. But I also wanted to point out that this, this message from the governor to local governments, and so we're going to be working with that over the next few days to see what we can do to achieve that, but that will still keep the facilities open that we're allowed to under the existing orders as we continue to move forward. Part of that is they also are putting together a robust marketing package, and the first thing that they put out is a video from the state epidemiologist. So Erica, will you please play that video?
Hi, I'm Dr. Rachel Hurlehe, Colorado State Epidemiologist, working on the COVID-19 response. COVID-19 has been spreading rapidly in our state. Cases and hospitalizations are going up, almost as high as what we saw in March and April. The cases have grown so much that in the Denver area, about 145 people are currently contagious with COVID. Let me put that into perspective. In a week, if you come across 20 people a day, whether that's at work, on the bus, getting coffee, going to the store, or people in your neighborhood are friends, you will be in contact with someone who is contagious with COVID-19. Ask yourself, how many people do you interact with in a day, and how can you reduce that? I want to ask you to do three things, starting today. For the rest of November, only interact with members of your household. Keep your distance, at least six feet at all times, and wear a mask. On behalf of the state of Colorado, thank you for stepping up and doing your part as we continue to do ours to protect you and your family.
All right, Susan, can you join us? There you are.
Okay, thank you, Harold. So I'm Susan Motika. I'm the Strategic Initiatives and Policy Director at Boulder County Public Health. Happy to be here today. I wanted to give you some background before we go into the, the slides that I've prepared for you. As Harold indicated, the governor is really exhorting local governments, local public health agencies to do everything in their power at this time. He is really, you know, very reluctant to issue blanket stay-at-home orders at this time. That, we know that the cases are escalating in the state, they're escalating in virtually every region of Colorado. So what we are being asked to do and what the governor, governor's office really strongly asked Boulder County Public Health to do and the region, the Metro Denver Partnership for Health, is to think about some additional measures that could be put in place in the form of a county order, and he's asking the metro directors to be doing this. So on Thursday morning at 8:00 AM, the Board of Health will be meeting to consider an order that will have some further restrictions on indoor events, spectators at sporting events, restaurants, a strong, strong recommendation for working at home. I don't want to get ahead of the specifics, which are still being negotiated and worked on. We've received tremendous feedback from the business community. Our hospitals have weighed in with tremendous feedback, and all my slides are going to indicate and demonstrate that escalation as well. So it really is this very careful balancing act. The state is really being clearer and clearer about two things in terms of guidance. One is the recommendation that anyone who can feasibly should return to working at home, and that is a strong recommendation. The other is that even though we are in the orange level, which as you know, allows up to 10 from no, no more than two households for personal gathering size. It is our strong recommendation, Jeff Ziyak and CDPHE as well, that, and I, I'm sorry, I got to log in again here, hold on. It is our very strong recommendation that people limit gatherings to their own family. And we know this is very difficult as Thanksgiving approaches, but we see this as very, very, very important to limit this surge that we're seeing all over. So those are two very, very strong recommendations. Why don't we turn to my slides now? That's okay? Next slide, please. So you can see that our two-week cumulative incidence rate is 458.8 per 100,000. And that definitely puts us in the red level, which was 350. Next slide, please. Our two-week testing positivity rate is now 7.1%. And I'll have more information on that a little later in the slide deck. Next slide, please. Our hospital status is still in the green, but I will be providing some more information about escalating hospitalizations and impacts there as well. Next slide, please. So this is our five-day average number of new cases of COVID-19 among Boulder County residents, and this is just as of November 9th. Our five-day rolling average is about 146 cases per day through the end of 11/8, which is higher than any point except our recent CU surge. Next slide, please. Our next graph shows Boulder County residents who've tested positive or considered probable by municipality. So here you can see that since October 1, Longmont, Longmont has the highest case rate per 100,000. Again, that's since 10/1/20. In the past seven days, 41% of our new case of, cases have resided in Boulder City, and 36% of our new cases have resided in Longmont. Next slide, please. So, you know, about a month or six weeks ago, when Jeff was presenting an RCU surge, you were seeing the highest rate among 18 to 22. They are still the highest rate, although you're, you could now see really clearly those other age groups, 23, 24, 25, 34, 35 to 44, really growing as well. Next slide, please. COVID-19 among children age 0 to 17 years. So here you can see a tripling of the 0 to 4-year age group and the 5 to 9-year-old age group. And I had a specific call preparing for this presentation with, with the mitigation specialist for early childhood, Sarah Scully. And she wanted me to emphasize to you that health screenings occur before either staff or students are allowed in, that people have to list their symptoms, answer if they've recently been quarantined, no one allowed, is allowed in sick, and people are isolated if they develop even one COVID symptom. And they, like the K through 12, are on the return-to-learn protocol. With this age group, as you know, it's extremely difficult to get two-year-olds to wear masks. So being very rigorous about those protocols is very important. I also spoke to Heather Crete, who was our, is our K to 12 policy expert. And she said that this protocol is still being used in the K to 12 schools and that this is this online form that is submitted through the Infinite Campus. They are seeing the spread through activities, outside sports, clubs, family gatherings, not seeing spread in the cohorts. But they, as, as, as you know, they have to submit this electronic symptom tracker. The incidence of cases is not surprising, given what we know about the community spread. Next slide, please. So here you can see the trend, two-week incidence of new COVID-19 cases. This is a slide that Jeff Ziyak always presents, it just in our last two weeks. And if you just look at that right-hand side, it just sees that, you can just see clearly that very significant escalation in those numbers among all age groups. And I won't give you like a statistical lecture here, but I will illustrate a bit. From 0 to 9, a 353% increase. Age 75 plus, a 172% increase. 18 to 22, a 168% increase. Next slide, please. So this is a slide you, you have seen before, but this is giving us information about race, Hispanic origin, and how those cases look. We know that Boulder County, 13.8% of the population is Latino. We know that 31.8% of COVID cases come from that community and 42.7% of all hospitalizations. And in the past seven days, 51.8% of our cases, or 331 cases, have been among Hispanic Latinx community, and 47.7% of our cases, or 305 cases, have been among white, non-Hispanic. I will just want to add to this data slide that we're embarking on a very comprehensive COVID plan with, which Lexi Nolan, our new deputy director, is working on. It will have a significant focus on the Latinx and other priority populations. And we have already been collaborating with Longmont, with Harold, with team on this. We've hired Nick Robles, who is a long, longtime Longmont resident, to be our bilingual resource coordinator. So I would just expect a lot of activity and collaboration as we learn from your already very successful efforts, and we collaborate further on this. Next slide, please. So next we see a summary of COVID testing among Boulder County residents. The number of PCR tests conducted, 117,326, our five-day average percentage of tests that are positive, 8%. Our five-day average percentage of tests that are positive, 8%. As you know, the metric for being in a safe zone is 5%. So that is significantly higher than the 5% number we would like to see. And our five-day average on this is 4.7%. Next slide, please. So you can look at our five-day rolling average of COVID PCR tests. This is very illustrative. As I said, the rolling average is 8%. This has been increasing over the past five weeks and it surpassed the level it was during the height of the young adult surge at CU in September. Next slide, please. Hospitalizations in Boulder County. This graph really starkly illustrates that upward, very, very strong upward trajectory. As of November 9, 86 people are hospitalized in Boulder County for confirmed COVID. Next slide, please. We're asked at times, how does this look compared to Colorado? So currently, we're at 1,174 people hospitalized for confirmed COVID across Colorado, and that's compared to 755 people only a week ago. This is the highest COVID hospitalization number we've ever had in Colorado. I would also point out that there have been 18 deaths from COVID in Boulder County since October 1. Next slide, please. And these are our resources that we always provide in our presentations that provides far more data and far more information. I also have a 59-slide deck, which Harold, I'm happy to send for people that would like much more in-depth. Happy to send that to you. I wanted to address, Harold, would that be, or Mayor, would it be appropriate for me to address some of the questions that came in in advance now? Or would you like me to wait on that?
What questions came in in advance? From who, council members?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead and address them now, that's fine.
Okay, I will do my best on that. So one question was, what is considered an outbreak? And just to remind you all, it's two or more cases with a common exposure within a 14-day period. Next question, people have seen places where there are two or more cases in a facility or building that are not categorized as an outbreak. Why is that? I spoke to our chief epidemiologist about this tonight, and she says, you know, there are other conditions that can affect us. For example, it didn't happen within a 14-day period, that people work in Boulder County but reside elsewhere, were dependent on the other county, that test results could be delayed, that there could be reporting lags. So as a general rule, that definition I gave you is correct and applied, but there are some variations that she indicated. So question about, we're going the education route, clarifying the expectation of masking and social distancing. Is it masking? Is it social distancing? Or must it be both? Jeff Zaak and I spoke about this yesterday, and he wanted me to urge that in the strongest possible terms, this must be a continued combination. And as Dr. Hurley indicated tonight in what Harold showed, the video, we've got to have masking, we've got to have social distancing, and we've got to have hand washing. We've got to have this constant combination in play. And that we are not actually looking at measures like, how safe are you if there's only a mask? How safe are you if there's social distancing but not a mask? We do not have data on this. And part of the emphasis, whether it's the CDC or State Health Department or us, is that integral combination of those factors. So there are questions too about gyms. So if we're limiting ourselves right now under orange to 10 people and two households, and gyms seeming to have more latitude here. Gyms are under, and I just, I pulled up the dial on this one, hang on a minute, please. Gyms and fitness centers are at 25% capacity, 25 indoors or outdoor groups less than 10. So what Jeff wanted me to emphasize here is that they are, and Trina Ruland, actually, our county attorney, gyms are highly regulated, they've got licenses, they're checked on, they have these requirements. As opposed to our personal gatherings with, which, you know, nobody's going to break into our house, so to speak, at Thanksgiving and examine our gatherings. You know, we're on an honor system with our gatherings. But gyms are really subject to that licensure requirement. I wanted to also reference, and I asked that this be sent to all of you. It's guidance document from CDPHE called "In-Person Learning in the Time of COVID", because another question that came in had to do with, it seems as though schools are allowed other kinds of latitude. Why is that? So if you take a look at that document that I sent at your convenience, it really talks about CDPHE analyzing K through 12 outbreak case distribution guidance, or not guidance, the actual results. And since March in K through 5, they found 23 outbreaks, 55 cases, 23 students with COVID. And in the middle schools, 10 outbreaks, 32 cases, 20 student cases. So in balancing, in balancing the need for students to be in school to benefit from that in a social, emotional, as well as educational sense, and also lower-income students benefiting as well, they really looked into this guidance and literature on that point. So I would urge you to read that document at your convenience if you haven't already. So another point that's really key is people who are outdoors have 20 times less chance of getting COVID when they're outside, as opposed to when they're indoors. So bear that in mind as we're going through some tough winter times, right, with gathering size. So in terms of events and parsing, you know, what kind of events, whether it's protests, sports, rally, big family gathering, what Jeff has said consistently, we have 1 in 100 people being infected and that gatherings, you have a First Amendment right. It's not about a right to gather, it's about what's judicious? What's in your health interest? What's in our community's health interests? And that severely restricting, to the greatest extent we can, gatherings are very, very important. So another question was, is there a trigger? What's the trigger for Boulder County Public Health to require schools to go remote when rates go up? So right now, under orange, there is not a trigger. But there is this continued examination of data by the school districts, by us, really looking closely and carefully at data and having a very collaborative and informed process. But there isn't, there isn't a specific numeric trigger right now. I think we had a question about the orange level and that classrooms cannot do targeted quarantine anymore. And that is true. Districts are well aware of it. Jeff, the local public health directors are well aware of this, and we are advocating with the schools, with the CDPHE on that point. I think that was about all the questions I had, Harold.
Councilmember Peck, and then we'll go with Councilmember Reddell.
Thank you, Mayor Badley. Susan, thank you for that. That was very detailed and interesting. I have a question about post-COVID. Is there any data being collected on people who have experienced the virus, gone through it, and then passed it, I'm sorry, and then tested negative after, but they're still experiencing symptoms, even though they have the antigens now? And are we doing any follow-up on that? Any data collection on, are we still having the fog brain? Are we still not being able to eat, taste, smell? And how long does that last? Because I think that is information that needs to be put out with these reports as well. Because people seem to think that if they get it, they get it. But we don't know what the long-lasting effects of this are or how long those symptoms can last after you've tested negative. So are we collecting any of that data?
I would just say from my office, Councilwoman Peck, that we are so focused on the surge of cases, the case investigation, the contact tracing, so focused on those core epidemiology functions and the communications aspect and the policy aspects, that we haven't devoted time to that yet. Nor am I aware, but this is an excellent question, nor am I aware of the Colorado School of Public Health doing it or CDPHE. I think that, you know, we keep seeing these waves and surges that we have to really try to competently address. But that is a very, very critical question that I will just put to the Metro Directors and to Colorado School of Public Health and CDPHE.
Okay.
I think the CDC is doing some work on that. And so it, you know, so they go most common reported long-term symptoms, fatigue, shortness of breath, cough, joint pain, chest pain. Other reported symptoms, difficult with thinking and concentration, depression, muscle pain, headache, intermittent fever, fast beating or pounding heart. And then more serious long-term is cardiovascular inflammation of the heart muscle, respiratory lung function anomalies, abnormalities on the renal side, acute kidney injury, dermatologic rash, hair loss, neurological smell, taste problems, sleep issues, difficulty with concentration, memory problems. And then on the psychiatric side, depression, anxiety, and changes in mood. So that's what they're hearing. And I think everybody, I think that's really where it's happening, is within the CDC in terms of that. And they'll be working with the schools of health to examine that in more detail.
Yeah, I would agree. The literature is indicating that, and that's in the topical literature, more popular literature as well. What Harold talked about, we haven't started studying that, but it is, a lot of people are going to be studying it because COVID repercussions, whether they're economic or, you know, physical impacts, they're going to be with us a long time.
All right, anything else, Susan?
No, I don't have anything further.
All right, Councilmember Reddell.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So one of them would be in regard to the masking and social distancing and washing of the hands. So would it be considered a violation of the workplace if not all three are occurring? Indoors.
We don't, there is not a specific order on hand washing.
And masking.
Yeah, and there are specific, there are specific rules on what offices can do with masking and that you need to be wearing a mask when you're in a hallway. You need to be maintaining that six-foot distance. And this is something that the county has really grappled with and our county attorneys have grappled with. Because sometimes people have really big offices and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't seem to make sense to people. But I think because of the very close, the need to have that combination of factors, that that has been required, and there is that specific masking order.
So we've had to, we've had to deal with that in our organization. So the governor's masking order requires a mask indoors. Generally, what the county attorneys and our attorneys, unless you're in an office that has four walls and a door and you're not in there with someone else. And we've even gotten to the level of cubicles, tall cubicles, short cubicles. Do they have doors, those types of issues? Generally, the rule of thumb that we're using is if you're in a building, you wear it. If you're with somebody else, based on the order that's been issued. We're a little bit different outside because of Boulder County's masking order. That's why they're both in play. They also require one outside if you can't adequately social distance. And that's not the same in other places.
So Harold, then I have a question for you in, so like common spaces, like the lounge, the staff lounge. Are people able to eat inside?
We're having that very conversation right now. And so basically, we're also looking at the restaurant guidance in terms of how they can eat in the lounges. But we had that conversation among my team and we're just actually encouraging people to eat in their offices and where they are next to someone else. Because it does, when you start having those exposures, it creates staffing issues on our part. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're doing now.
And so, and through contact tracing, has anything throughout the county been brought back to, these outbreaks occurred in the staff lounge or in common eating spaces like that? Not necessarily restaurants, but in places of business, offices?
So maybe Susan and I tag-team this. I think what I've been briefed on in our administrators' call is that if you really look at what's generating the bulk of the cases right now, and I think this is an important message for the community, it really is in the social gatherings. You know, when they were doing the contact tracing, and that's another conversation we're having, just because of the volume of cases. It's different today than it was, you know, a few weeks ago. But what they're finding is it is coming out of the social gatherings more than it is out of restaurants, out of business units.
Okay, absolutely. I was just, may I just add there? Yeah, it's just that is what we hear consistently through the Metro Directors from the Colorado Health Department, that social gatherings are absolutely the number-one source. And that is why the recommendation about voluntarily limiting our gathering sizes even below what the orange level requires is being strongly recommended now.
Okay, and then the other thing was around the outbreaks. So, you know, and I'm going to, full disclosure, I'm a teacher in the school district. And the school district is the largest employer of the city of Longmont. So how the operations are handled there affect our community. It impacts our constituents, our ability to function as a city. So, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, as I'm advocating for whatever piece in my union capacity, that I'm also not doing anything or supporting anything that's going to damage or hurt the city and our constituents and the health and well-being of our residents. So one of the things, going back to the outbreak. So we've had cases where there are two or more in a building, but they're not considered an outbreak. And the message that's being told, and, you know, and it kind of changes. And I think that it could be that the individuals who are sharing the information are not fully understanding. So they're putting in their own interpretation. Or are the guidelines changing throughout? Because early on, I mean, we had this metric where we were looking at, and I can't find it anywhere on the website. There's a new metric description that has, you know, the threshold is totally different or higher to move to fully remote than it was here, than what we discussed back in September. So the message on outbreaks is that if they did not come from, so if you had two in a building, if one came from one outsource and the other one came from another source, that's not considered an outbreak. And I want to know if that's true or not.
Well, it's that definition of two or more cases with a common exposure. So I guess it's very dependent upon these facts. Like, how close were those people? Did they have a common exposure? And as Carol Hillwood said, within a 14-day period. Perhaps it didn't happen within a 14-day period. You know, perhaps a person who was exposed worked in Boulder County but lived somewhere else. worked in Boulder County but lived somewhere else. And I'm not trying to just repeat those things. I think that I would inquire with the people that are making decisions about that, what criteria, what, what specific facts? What specific facts are governing? Because I think that that's what, the other thing Carol said is that the state is looking, Councilwoman, at some revised definitions and guidance on these outbreaks. I mean, obviously, the questions you're asking are, you know, they're, they're being heard by the state of Colorado, not just from Longmont, and that they are looking at some additional guidance on this. So I think we'll have more information to give to Harold and give to you soon. But that's the best I can say right now, is that collecting those specific facts.
I'm answering the right, I'm asking the right questions. So, you know, it's, so it is really probing. And I want to be sure that I'm probing the right people too. And that would be.
All right.
Well, and to Susan's point, in the last admin call I had, many of those questions were echoed by many other communities, putting those same questions in the, in the mix. And so I know Chris, how do you say this?
Mescheck. Chris Mescheck from.
Yeah, from the interim city manager in Boulder. Said, yeah, I'm getting the same questions. So we're all getting them and we're all trying to get those same answers.
Okay. And then how involved is the county in doing the contact tracing for Boulder Valley, for us? When we have cases?
Well, where, when there are outbreaks, the epidemiology office of our office is notified and they're taking their appropriate measures and steps.
Okay.
I was under the impression that we were having a hard time keeping up with the contact tracing.
Yes, yes, yes. That is absolutely correct. Carol Hellwig has indicated that there are really hundreds of cases right now. This is just based on those numbers I gave you, that things are really, really escalating. We are doing our best to add staff, to volunteer other staff, to be looking at different ways to do this. Harold, did you want to add?
Yeah, so that, to that point, based on the volume of cases, they are having struggles with the contact tracing. I know in admin calls, several people were talking about what can we do to help hire positions? I've had conversations with my team when we talked about this issue. To give you a sense, I mean, Tuesday, Thursday with my full team, we have calls with other administrators, I have another admin call. We've had conversations internally about how can we repurpose our staff to assist the county in the contact tracing function, at least at a basic level, so we can communicate with people immediately, talk to them quickly about who are you around? What were you, what are you doing? So we can try to stay on top of this. All within the framework of we're in community spread, but still, how do we collectively staff that to support our county partners? And I'll touch on that in terms of conversations I've been having with Lexi once Susan's finished.
And although, when Jeff presented his slides, he had a slide on there about individual, person-to-person cases, there are cases that were, because it was individual, and then others that were community spread. Does that seem familiar to anybody? Was I like imagining it? How come I haven't, I would like to see that slide of that again.
I'd be delighted, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 that's, no, that would be.
I will look through our slide deck of 59. I was really trying to kind of capture a story in a framework for you because our whole slide deck is really, really big. But I will look for that slide for you. But I think that, and, and we've done some tinkering. We got some, we got a lot of feedback. And we've done some tinkering and labeling and in, more in-depth surveillance data work, frankly, with the slides. But I know that what it is indicating is that the community spread, one in 100 people are infected with COVID, whether they're asymptomatic or symptomatic. So I think that Jeff may have been making that case, sort of showing a trend that was growing, but it wasn't as strong as it is today. Today, it is very strong, that we have community spread, nobody doubts that. And that the person-to-person that we saw in March, April and May, and I am remembering that slide right now, that was much more relevant in the early part, COVID one.
Yes, yes. And so, and you had asked, you had asked if anybody was interested in a copy of the slide deck or emailing it? Yeah, I am interested. I, I like data.
So I can tell that, no problem. I'll forward that to Harold.
Okay, great, thank you very much. I think that was all, and if not, I'll email Harold or I'll email you. Thank you.
You bet.
I guess the, want something I, just to throw out, Dr. Waters, go ahead, you first. Your arm's getting tired. Go ahead, Doc.
Interesting here, I just.
Go ahead.
Since you deferred, Susan, thanks for your, for the information. Could you, could you help me reconcile my mind? What, when I think I saw you present, and I'm not certain what slide number it is, for the cohorts of zero to five, six to 12, whatever those age cohorts were, and the, and the numbers that have increased over the two reporting periods? Because those numbers, if I recall what I saw, are hard to reconcile with the numbers in the document you sent on teaching in person. And I'm just wondering what I'm not understanding in terms of the discrepancy between what you presented and the rates of infection now versus what I'm seeing in this document.
Yeah, and I think that, and I can have our epidemiologists look into the actual math analysis on this. But I would just say, and I should have said this at the beginning, that the actual numbers are still relatively small. For example, in the two-week period of October 12 to October 25, it's eight. So we're not looking at those vast numbers that we see with CU and other age groups. And in October 26 through 11 to eight, I'm sorry, November 8, a count of 25.
So what age group would that be?
I'm sorry, that was zero to four. Yep, that was zero to four. So that's something that we got, we have gotten feedback, good feedback on the data. Make sure, and forgive me for not doing that. It's like, you can triple and people can think, well, is that 400? Oh my God, it tripled. But when you can see it, it was eight, go ahead.
Give me the, is it, the next cohort is five to what?
Five to nine.
Give me those numbers.
Certainly. So in.
It's on the screen now, Susan.
To October, yeah, thanks. October 12 to October 25, 13, and then 52 from October 26 to November 8.
Got it. So Susan, are these infections? These are confirmed?
So this is COVID, people that have, kids that have confirmed COVID. And I think I'm understanding your question about the data that I presented, you know, saying, let's all take a look at that CDPHE report, that that is based on earlier, earlier data certainly than the October 26 through 11/8. That is my guess on that.
No, it's not. It's dated November 2020. And the numbers are substantially smaller than what you're showing us right now. That's what I'm trying to reconcile. And it goes back, I think, a little bit to the concerns that Councilmember Hidalgo-Ferring was sharing about consistency and clarity and meaning, right, of the data. Because, because the, whoever put together the page you sent to us about teaching in person, the data in that report are, or an approximation of the data that you just shared, just in Boulder County. And how do we reconcile that discrepancy is my question? Why is it so different? And it's not because, because once in October, once in November, it's going up in November. These numbers should be higher than what you presented, not lower.
Yeah. And I think what, what I'll do is have our chief epidemiologist work with me on that to get you an answer, because that's quite frankly, and, and you know, this, this report from CDPHE literally just came out and these numbers we've got yesterday from our, the COVID children case count, I'll have our epidemiologists in CDPHE really reconcile this and have an answer for you.
Well, and I'll, and I'll be quiet, but part of.
Oh, that's good.
Part of my concern i- in terms of understanding that the reasons for the discrepancy, what it is. The broader concern is, the last thing we want to do is trot data out that we, that we can't verify, we can't defend or we can't explain. Because for those who want to question the data, it just gives them a, a reason to question the data. And I'm not, I'm not questioning what we got from you. I'm pretty, I'm pretty confident I can rely on those data. It's, it's the document from CDPHE on teaching in person and, you know, what those differences are. So.
Yeah. We'll get to the bottom, I promise you. We'll get to the bottom of it. And our epidemiologists will talk to the epidemiology folks at CDPHE who did this analysis, which I think the general correct, what we've seen in trends across the country and reading about this, is that there is less case incidence in that younger population. So we'll square up those numbers, though.
All right. If, if the data on teaching in person is as dramatically understated as it looks like it is, that ought to be a concern on the part of a whole bunch of folks, parents, educators, us. So getting that reconciled soon was going to be really helpful.
Absolutely. And reconciled, reconciled may not mean, reconciled means in my mind, providing the explanation and the analysis about the sources, comparing them and those traditional, that traditional sort of epidemiology analysis of where it comes from and how it was calculated. That's what I'm committing to.
Yeah, part of what we can tell you, the numbers that she gave you are produced in turn, so the eight to 25, 13 to 52, that's our local numbers and that's what's produced by Boulder County Health. We can understand that. We will need to reach out to CDPHE to have them reconcile that for us.
Harold, it looks to me like in the, in the document that was forwarded to us, this is a statewide take, I mean.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, it's CDPHE.
Numbers of teachers, numbers of, of students statewide.
Yes, yes, you're right.
Number, not a percentage, a number of cases, for example, of K5, reporting 23 students statewide. I mean, that just, it doesn't, it's like hard to understand where this came from. So that's, that's the concern.
Understand you completely.
Harold, could you, I mean, we, I don't want to debate that. I mean, unless people are like, absolutely not. Going back to the first thing that was presented tonight was a very, I think, articulate, artic, articulate, articulate and a succinct message conveyed by Colorado's head epidemiologist in the governor's office. Part of the problem we're dealing with here is that you've got left versus right ways of thinking. I do think that everyone could, I mean, I think everyone would agree that we need to do the things that were asked of us. And so I'm almost inclined to ask city staff to write up a resolution basically saying, we encourage everyone for the following reasons to do these things. And then basically let the city of Longmont, our citizens and constituents know that we endorse what the governor's office just said. Because I don't think anyone's going to watch that video and I don't think the message is going to get out. And I think that if we pass a law or we threaten, you're going to have half of the people say, no way. And you're going to, I just think that, I think the message needs to get out to folks that we need to stay six feet apart, wear our masks. And, and what was the other thing? Wear it six feet apart, wear our masks. Oh, and, and to the extent possible.
Stay with your family unit.
Yeah, stay within your family unit. And so I think that that's something that we should convey. So.
So yeah, and to that point, you know, just internally, I'll tell you what we're dealing with. We, we've had to deal with masking issues. And, and for me, it's, it's a pretty simple equation.
So, but I think, I think if we just ask people and just pass along the message that the governor's asking us to, I just think that.
No, I agree with you. I agree with you because to let you know how it impacts it, and I'm just giving you an example as an organization. If I'm next to you, and we had one of these issues where someone tested positive, but guess what? Everyone is socially distanced and everyone is wearing the mask. And, and so when you look at it, we don't have to quarantine people because they're there. And so we continue providing the services we're providing to our community.
Just doing, doing, create drafting a resolution and I think you can, I mean, to avoid the whole constitutional versus just all those arguments and just say, let's do this, please.
Correct, and I think, I need to update you on some other things too.
All right. So Susan, thank you so much. We appreciate you. All right?
I'll be back in touch on a range of issues. Thank you so much tonight. Bye-bye.
All right, Harold?
So some other issues going on. So we are also partnering with Boulder County Health and Susan can stay on during this in case I missed something. So we have opened the testing location at the fairgrounds. Dan Eman and our emergency management team, they're working with them to assist in that operation. It's also creating more testing opportunities. Also, as, as we look at the data and see where the cases are coming in the community, I do have access to see a more focused dataset. I can't share that because of any number of privacy issues. And so we're also working with our cultural brokers to have pop-up testing sites at different locations in our community based on where we're seeing a number of tests, a number of, where we're seeing issues within our community. So we are going to work with Lexi Nolan, I believe it's Nolan, and really working those issues on the testing side. But then as we look at the mitigation approach to the mayor's suggestion about a resolution, I think that's really important because how we work within neighborhoods and how we communicate with neighborhoods is going to be incredibly important. And then at the same time, I've talked to my team about working with Jessica and Kimberly and all of our economic development partners about really engaging our business owners here. Because I want to point something out that Susan said at the beginning. No one wants to go back to stay at home. And notice she said that the governor's not looking at doing this. It's not where anyone wants to go. And, and to do that, we have to do the things that the mayor just indicated. Wear a mask, social distance, and stay within our family units and really follow those guidelines. And I think those are incredibly important messages because the data's telling us where we're seeing the case growth. And we are seeing the hospitalization starting to increase in our, in our community. And what we know is if we do those things, we can move in the opposite direction. And so we will prepare the resolution to get that message out.
And Harold, I think that part of the message, I think it needs to be conveyed, is it doesn't matter if the governor shuts us down or not. If your entire office staff gets sick, it doesn't matter. So, I mean, the, getting people to, I mean, yeah, just getting people to voluntarily comply, I think, is the key here.
Well, that's the key. We're struggling with that right now in terms of when somebody's kid gets it and whether they need a quarantine. And then how does that affect operations? And I was on the phone for an hour before the meeting, talking about issues. And it really is about, if your entire staff gets sick, what are you going to do? And, and that's the issue that I think, that's a good point, Mayor. And so we will, we will focus on that.
All right, cool, thanks. We'll write it up and we'll deal with it. All right.
There you go. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, then let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. And actually, let's shoot for three, but we'll probably take five. And let's wait for Public Invited to be Heard to go ahead and call in. So we're going to go ahead and do first call, Public Invited to be Heard. And we're going to take a five-minute break while everybody calls in and gets in the queue. At the end of that five-minute break, we will stop taking people into the queue once we're all back and, and make sure that the calls are done. So, see you in a little bit.
Hi folks. Thank you for joining us. As we admit folks into the meeting for public comment, please remember to mute your live stream and listen for the instructions on your telephone. When it's time for you to speak, I'll call you by the last three digits of your telephone number, at which time you should be able to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. And then you will have three minutes. I think we have just a couple more minutes to go.
All right, he's back.
What a good looking crew.
All right, Mayor, it looks like we have about eight folks for public invited to be heard whenever you're ready.
All right, let's go ahead and start them.
All right, for the caller ending in zero one seven, you should be able to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes. Caller zero one seven. All right, let's try caller four two four. Caller four two four, are you able to unmute yourself and state your name and address?
Any chance that we might be having a problem?
It looks like they unmuted, but caller four two four, we're not able to hear you.
Try hitting star six on your phone and then star six again to mute and unmute.
I heard him hit it.
Let's say we'll, we'll come back to him, Erica.
Sure. Caller four two four, we'll come back to you. We're going to move on to four seven four. Caller four seven four, are you able to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record?
Yes, here I am. Can you hear me?
We can, loud and clear. Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Ethan Chetko, one five six 11th Avenue. I'm calling in to just comment on the RV ordinance. I was involved with the first update to that code that was passed and discussed at length by this group here three years ago. And at the time, it was a significant issue. What caused us to be, become involved with the conversation was an RV or a series of RVs that parked in front of our residence for over a month. Couple, several months in one instance. And the code that was developed, was developed, I'm not going to say in haste, but it was definitely developed to address an issue that was very concerning to the public and needed immediate attention. And I remember this group in particular stating that we needed action over complacency, while admittedly not knowing the full ramifications of what this code would mean or code adjustment would mean. And so it was admittedly imperfect, but as Harold Dominguez said earlier this evening, that's how Longmont rolls. We're acting as a community, which I appreciate. But I think as time has continued to show us that this code is not completely perfect. It's, it's been effective in giving code enforcement an opportunity to move vehicles along and limit the dwelling time in any one and imposition in any one neighborhood for a certain amount of time. It's not as intended, 48 hours was the intention. After you look at the time it takes to report things and then have code enforcement then come and enforce it, et cetera, we're looking at more about a week before people are really forced to move along. And I think we're recognizing that it's time for an update and refinement of this code. And here we are. So I appreciate the group, the council looking at this issue. I would just like to say that not taking action on this is not an option. I think the time is now to take action. And this isn't really not about keeping up with the Joneses and our neighbors and what other cities and municipalities are doing. But rather this is just about doing right by the citizens and taxpayers of Longmont. And I implore you to, even though I don't have the answers here, that's why you guys get paid the big bucks. Right? But figure out some logical next steps and, and take some action. So I'll leave my comments at that, but I appreciate that.
All right, thank you, sir.
You'll be moving forward with it.
Appreciate it. Okay, next caller.
Just a sec here. All right, caller four two four, were you able to unmute yourself? Caller four two four. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Dan Olson. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. I live at one six seven four Brown Court in Longmont. I'm calling about the RV ordinance as well. And I emailed you all just a few hours ago and there is some confusion about whether owners like me of a trailer can park out front for 48 hours prior to a trip. I looked through the ordinance. It's not obvious, but I'm not a lawyer. So in any case, I bring my camper trailer home from the storage unit, park it out front, load it and unload it. But part of loading is charging the batteries and cooling your refrigerator. And that's more than just a couple of hours. So I'm hoping that in the final ordinance, there is some provision for parking out front for overnight at least, maybe two nights, so that we can cool off the fridge, get the batteries charged, load her up and off we go. Appreciate you guys working on this. I do think an ordinance update is needed for the other reasons, the whole sleeper vehicle part. But I'm hoping you'll protect the us owners who don't park out front all of the time, just when we're ready to get going. Thanks so much for your help. Appreciate all your work on this.
Thanks, Dan. All right, next.
All right, caller four eight eight, you should be able to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my name is Scott Cunningham. I'm calling in on the AMI smart meter issue. I practice integrative internal medicine, as I think that you all probably know. And I've helped many of my patients recover from the adverse health effects of the same radio frequency radiation emitted by the wireless version of the AMI smart meter presently under review. So I'm going to focus my comments this evening on clarifying material covered during the recent study session by Boulder County's air quality coordinator. I understand how daunting the biological literature on radio frequency radiation health effects can, can be. As a practicing clinician, I've wrestled with it myself. However, my goal in the next couple of minutes is to appeal directly to the literature rather than relying on statements from so-called experts who may or may not have actually read the current scientific literature about the harms of wireless radiation. I'll start with this particular speaker's statement that non-ionizing radiation, including that used by the wireless AMI smart meters, can't cause tissue damage at the low levels of power used by those devices. The scientific literature, however, paints a much different picture. We have multiple peer reviewed studies, both animal and human, showing tissue damage, including breakage of DNA. In fact, I've sent links to those studies to the council for your review. Careful, careful review of the same literature also debunks the tired theory that only the thermal effects of radio frequency radiation are relevant to biological systems. Let's, let's apply this rich body of scientific literature to the daily life of you and I. The fact that we're, and I quote, every second of every day exposed to radiation from a number of different sources, end quote, does not mean that we shouldn't work to reduce that scientifically proven hazard to our health. Did we use that reasoning with lead paint? Or with the toxic haze flowing out of factory smokestacks? No, we didn't. Here's another one. Just because many are unknowingly exposed to a manmade source of radiation doesn't lessen its negative biological impact. I'll leave you with a question to ponder. Knowing what we now know about wireless radiation, is it even ethical to impose it upon our population? Thank you very much.
That was exactly three minutes. That was spot on. Thank you. All right, next caller.
Caller four nine nine, four nine nine, you should be able to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, this is Doe Kelly of Barberry Drive. And I am one of the self avowed EMF canaries in the coal mine. You've heard me speak of this, living within the local Longmont community. I attended the Longmont City Council AMI and smart meter study session on October the 20th. I realized that one of your experts, a person extremely well versed on wireless smart meters, as well as professionally embedded within the AMI industry, and therefore perhaps not as trustworthy to my mind anyway, as an independent consultant named Rick Schmidt, downplayed the dangers of smart meter fires. I would like to counter his suggestion that statistically these fires are insignificantly small by challenging each of you to Google the term smart meter fires and also smart meter fires in Sacramento specifically. And see for yourself what videos and articles pop up. I would like to suggest that according to other knowledgeable experts, a reason these fires appear to be statistically insignificant may be that when there is such a fire, the utility is called in to dismantle the wireless electronic microwave emitting smart meter from its connection to voltage ASAP, thus removing the evidence of this type of fire hastily from the building for better or worse, with or without intent of hiding such a fire. Because I don't know. And so I ask you, the great and generous people who are publicly elected and accountable representatives in Longmont, our city council, why on earth would insurance companies refuse to insure smart meters were it not for this obvious danger and other known hazards? Mechanical analog meters last up to 50 years. Our analog meter is nearly 25 years old and ticking along like the Energizer bunny and is not a fire hazard compared with a wireless smart meter. Add this to all the evidence of. Add this to all the evidence of health harms from ubiquitous radio frequency waves, AKA microwaves, in our current environment, and we have not only a recipe for disaster in terms of fire dangers, but also in terms of ours and our children's as well as our elders' health. As the damage continues to mount up, the more ambient and ubiquitous this microwave electrosmog continues to proliferate. We need wise wired cities, not wireless so-called smart infrastructure. I urge you to reconsider the AMI Wireless Smart Meter Program in Longmont, knowing that wired infrastructure is by far the healthier, safer way to move into a healthier future for all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next caller.
Caller nine eight three, nine eight three, you should be able to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Uh first of all, I'd like to thank you for the twenty-five dollar um um circle um wooden uh uh tokens. For my family, we live in an RV, and this is Darlene O'Shannon again. And um somebody stopped by and gave us four of them. Thank you very much. Um, so I want to finish where I left off last week when I was cut off. And my last sentence was, with all due respect, now is not the time to make no parking laws because of the COVID and because it's freezing cold out here. So and and I just would like to know, just for your information, do you know that the dump station takes only credit cards, Visa, or MasterCard? And not everyone has credit cards. And also, I'd like to tell Mr. Dominguez that your COVID nineteen, we cannot turn down that road because it says do not enter. So I saw that today. Um, and to Jeff Satter, I'd like to say of how many of those vehicles that he told off, nine hundred, I think it was he mentioned, how many of those are RVs? And how many warning tickets were repeats of the same vehicle? And to Karen, with coordinated entry, I'd like to say, how many from Longmont did you put in the Boulder shelter? And did you know that when they came back to Longmont, they were not able to get services from our center because they were now Boulder residents? And did I hear someone say, mention for RVs going to Well County? Well, does that mean we can't get any services from Boulder County if you did that? What a dilemma. So anyways, and about the parking. Suppose I do find a place to park outside of the city limits, and I come in with my RV, and I park in the city. Can I park in front of the laundromat laundromat without without getting in trouble? How about if I came to church? Can I park my RV in front of the church and not get in trouble? Um, so absolutely no parking whatsoever. And what about, you need to, then you mentioned sleepers. Well, what about eighteen-wheelers? There's plenty of eighteen-wheelers that park all over Longmont, lots of times. So anyways, I just wanted to bring some of these things to your attention. And um I'm looking for a different place to go, but who knows? Yeah, so sending my love to all of you. Thank you very much for being there for us. Okay, thank you. Bye.
All right, next caller.
All right, caller four one eight. You should be able to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. Caller four one eight.
Yes, uh this is Stan Toll. Confirm that I can be heard.
You can be heard.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, I I'm talking about the 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 sleeper vehicle ordinance. Uh, I guess it includes just about anything you can sleep in. Um, I guess you have to start towing every single car in the community now. Um, one of the things is is that we're in the middle of a pandemic, and we're doing this Zoom thing, and less than ten percent of the people in the community can actually access, know how to access these Zoom meetings. Um, and as far as the RV, there, as part of the Colorado Open um Meeting Law, people that are impacted by the law, there's a requirement that you, that the city, before it can be declared an open meeting electronically, has to make arrangements for the people that the law impacts. How many people that are being impacted that are living in RVs has the city made arrangements for these people to be involved in these meetings? None of them. So this meetings are violating the open meeting uh requirements in this state. And if you violate the open meeting statute, any decision that you make in violating the open meeting statutes are void. Okay, that's just a process. The actual law that you're trying to enact apparently violates constitutional statutory rights of for people that have no other shelter operate options. And particularly people with disabilities like myself, who found that they cannot afford anything other than living in a vehicle at this time. So what happened is like under this Martin versus the city of Boise, there has to be other options. The city has been violating the Fair Housing Act by not allowing um RV parking situations for people with disabilities and people with other options to have safe places to park. So and also the coordinated entry, it's really coordinated entry is is coordinated expulsion. Because you're declared not a resident of the of the of the city anymore. And that's that's kind of a violation of people's rights.
All right, Stan, that's three, that's three minutes, but we thank you very much for calling in. Appreciate it. All right, next caller. We should, do I have two more?
Uh, I believe this is our last caller, caller five one eight, caller ending in five one eight. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is John Flower. My address is seven one nine Pendleton Avenue. Uh, I am president of the Ryder Ridge Homeowners Association, and I have lived at this address in Longmont for over twenty years. Uh, I have spoken um before about this and addressed the council in writing earlier today. Um, the this new ordinance about RV parking um goes too far. And some of the other callers have mentioned some of the problems with it, and I'm going to talk about a different kind of problem. This ordinance makes it illegal for me to park my my good condition, current licensed, small motor home um in front of my house just to clean the leaves or snow off my driveway. I mean, as I read the ordinance, that's what it's telling me. I can't put it out on the street. Um, our street is wide enough so it doesn't block anything, and we use this as our second car, so we're not going to put it in storage somewhere else. Now, I understand the issues that the ordinance is trying to address. One of the big triggers was people sleeping in vehicles in front of private homes that they have no relation with, you know, one of the early callers mentioned that. We don't sleep in our vehicle except when we're traveling somewhere else. And I know there's other issues, different issues around town, such as narrow streets in the old town area. So I have a couple of suggestions to make this workable. Um, first of all, make sure this ordinance is complaint-driven. Make sure it's complaint-driven and not just something that the code enforcement is supposed to drive around and look for uh uh problems. Because I can tell you, if someone was camping in front of my house or blocking half the street on our block, I would be the first to call code enforcement. I mean, I I agree, that's a problem. And and like the last caller suggested, I'm going to say the same thing. You've got to put a little more effort into finding alternatives for people who need to sleep in their vehicle. Some of these are, you know, there's some kind of image of them. These are all vagrants and people that are homeless, you know. Not, that's not always the case. Some of these are traveling nurses or construction workers. I mean, you know, that are showing up for a project. So anyway, that's my two suggestions. Make sure this is complaint-driven, and that way the neighborhood where it's a problem is going to actually get the focus. And puts, and I remember all the problems that you had in trying to find up places for other people to sleep, but you know, you got to do something. So that's my two suggestions, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. All right, that concludes first call public invited to be heard. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Don.
Mayor Bagley, item nine A is ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-nine, a bill for an administrative ordinance approving the grant of a deed of conservation easement in gross from the city of Longmont to the Longmont Conservation District on the Newby Farms Open Space Property, public hearing and second reading scheduled for December first, twenty twenty. Nine B is ordinance twenty twenty dash sixty, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance brand Municipal Airport Hanger Parcel H fourteen V to Craig Nelson, public hearing and second reading scheduled for December first, twenty twenty. Nine C is ordinance twenty twenty dash sixty-one, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance brand Municipal Airport Municipal Airport Hanger Parcel H thirty-seven to Robert Singer, public, public hearing and second reading scheduled for December first, twenty twenty. Ninety is resolution twenty twenty dash one ten, a resolution of the Longmont City Council authorizing the transfer of a portion of the unencumbered appropriation balance of the employee benefit fund to the employee pension fund. Ninety is resolution twenty twenty dash one eleven, a resolution amending the financial policies of the city of Longmont for twenty twenty-one. Nine F is resolution twenty twenty dash one twelve, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the city of Longmont twenty twenty-one classification and pay plan for city employees. Nine G, resolution twenty, pardon me, twenty twenty dash one thirteen, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for mediation services. Nine H is was a resolution twenty twenty dash one fourteen, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Longmont and the state of Colorado, Division of Fire Prevention and Control for Emergency Facilities and Land Use of Button Rock Reservoir, Clover Basin Reservoir, and McCall Lake. Nine I is resolution twenty twenty dash one fifteen, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Longmont Housing Authority for Support and Services. And nine J is approve one capital improvement program amendment.
Do we have a motion? Councilmember Christensen?
Uh, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Christensen and second by Councilmember Peck. I saw your move, your lips moved first, so we'll count you, Councilmember Peck. All right, any further discussion or debate? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. The consent agenda is moved and passes unanimously. All right, let's go on to ordinances on second reading. The first is item ten A, ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-one, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty. Are there any questions from council? All right, seeing none, staff does not have a presentation, I believe. All right, um let's go ahead and open it. Actually, let's go ahead and take a three-minute break. And if you are wanting to speak at uh the public hearing for any of the the issues um coming up, um let's go ahead and just take a three-minute break and call in now. Okay? So back in three.
All right, folks, if you would like to call in now for any of the public hearings on the matters on the agenda this evening, uh now is your chance to do that. Please remember to mute the live stream and listen to the instructions on your telephone when you call. We'll admit folks into the meeting and call you by the last three digits of your telephone number. Just a reminder, folks, that these are um public hearing time to call in for any of the ordinances on second reading, item ten on the agenda. Uh, we've got just a couple more minutes here. And please remember to mute your live stream when you call and listen to the instructions on your telephone.
All right. We back? We're waiting for people to come back. Why don't we go ahead and open the public hearing on item ten A, ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-one? Is there anybody in the queue for for public hearing?
Yes, mayor, we have uh looks like about five folks in the queue.
I am assuming that these are all RV related. Um, is there a way to uh find out?
Uh, I think we can do the hand raising with, I believe it's star nine, if you want to do that.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and proceed. Um, and if you could raise your hand if you are going to be addressing anything other than um the RV ordinance, that would be helpful. Again, hit star nine if you want to address anything other than the RV ordinance. If you raise your hand, we will stop. We'll ask you which one you're going to talk on, and we'll make sure that we address it. But in the meantime, we're going to go ahead and proceed. And uh if someone doesn't want to, we'll reopen, we'll redo, we'll do a redo if for some reason somebody wants to say something about the budget. All right, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-one. Do we have a motion, please? I'm going to move ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-one. Second. All right, it's been moved by myself, second by Dr. Waters. Any other debate? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-one passes unanimously. Item ten B, ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-two, a bill for an ordinance adopting the budget for the city of Longmont for the year twenty twenty-one. Um, uh, any questions from council? All right, um, has anyone raised their hand? Don? We'll go ahead and open it to pub for public hearing. Don?
No one has raised their hand. No.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-two. Do we have a motion?
I'll move uh ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-two.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Dr. Waters, seconded by Councilmember Yvette Ferring. Any further discussion, debate, dialogue? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. All right, ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-two passes unanimously. Item ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-three, which is item ten C on the agenda, a bill for an ordinance making appropriations for the expenses and liabilities the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty-one. Any questions from council? Comments, concerns? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Is anyone raising their hand? Don?
No, they are not, mayor.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing pertaining to ordinance twenty twenty, or ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-three. Do we have more uh a motion? Councilmember Christensen, you put your hand near your ear. Do you want to make a motion?
No, I'm just moving the hair out of my face.
Somebody make a motion.
I'll move ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-three.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Dr. Waters and seconded by Councilmember Peck. Um, any further additional debate, dialogue? All right, all in favor of All right, all in favor of ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty three, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty three passes unanimously. All right, item ten D ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty four, a bill for an ordinance amending section three point oh four point eight eight five, the Longmont Municipal Code, adopting an amendment to the employee contribution requirement, the city of Longmont General Employees Retirement Plan. Any questions from council? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody raising their hand?
I don't see anybody with a hand raised, mayor.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I move ordinance twenty twenty fifty four.
Second.
It's been moved by councilmember Peck, seconded by Dr. Waters. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. All right, ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty four passes unanimously. All right, let's go on to item ten E ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty five, a bill for an ordinance authorizing a farmland lease agreement between the city of Longmont and Joseph M. Dochif on the French property. The, are there any questions from council? All right, anybody, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody, anybody hit star nine?
Doesn't look like it, mayor, as of yet.
All right, well, they, I'm going to go ahead and we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. The reason I'm chuckling is, a couple of years ago, I went out and met with Larry French. To check out the lease, to look into this particular farm, this, this area that we're leasing. And he got me in his pickup truck, looked at me, proceeded to go thirty miles an hour in reverse and just nailed my subversion. Yes, anyway, that's why I was chuckling, good memories. So all in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
I'm sorry, mayor, who moved that and seconded that?
I'll move it. Dr. Waters, you want to second it?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded by Dr. Waters. All in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, it passes unanimously. All right, ordinance, let's see here, ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty six, which is item ten F, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of right of way within the Villas, Yoot Creek subdivision, generally located north of Seventeenth Avenue and west of Pace Street. Any questions from council? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody hit star nine, Don?
No takers on this one either, mayor.
All right, no takers. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'll move ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty six.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and take it as, moved by Dr. Waters, seconded by councilmember Christensen. All in favor, say aye, aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty six passes unanimously. We're going to go ahead and skip ten G for a moment. Let's go on to ten H. Ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty eight, a bill for an administrative ordinance approving the purchase option agreement to convey a parcel of city owned land located at two thousand Sunset Way to Sunset Element LLC. All right, let's go ahead and ask if there's any questions from council. All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody want to talk on ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty eight? Anybody hitting star nine?
No, mayor, no takers.
All right, I didn't think so. Running a risk there, just jumping all over the agenda, but trying to keep her moving along. All right, so we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty eight? Councilmember Doggo.
I'll move ordinance twenty twenty fifty.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by councilmember Doggo Ferring, seconded by councilmember Christensen. All in favor of passing ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty eight, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, item ten H, ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty eight passes unanimously. All right, now let's go back to item ten G, ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty seven, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter eleven of the Longmont Municipal Code on vehicles abandoned, kept on public property or junked. Let's go ahead and have the staff report.
So mayor and council, I know we presented this to you all on a couple of occasions, so we don't have a detailed presentation on this at this point. I did want to clarify, there were some questions about us asking the county in terms of. Their involvement in, in consideration of the fairgrounds. I did receive a letter from. Jana Peterson, who's the county administrator on this issue. I sent that via email to you all, but generally what I want to call council's attention to. Is the last paragraph where it said. When I go before that, actually, the HSBC, we talked about the recommendation they made during the, the last council session. The county commissioner supported the board's motion and recommendation. And agreed with the concerns expressed. They also directed staff to work with. Us and follow up on the assessment of impacted RV dwellers to inform. Whether there's an interest in a need for short term sixty days or less option using the fairgrounds to fill a temporary, temporary gap. Until other options are, are developed. And so we have reached out to Robin Bohannon. Jen and I have talked about this issue and will continue the conversations. Generally, what they want us to look at is, and this is going to be part of another survey that we're going to do, is really understand. Where individuals fit and what the need is. And, and again, as we stated before, and I'm going to ask Karen to jump in in case I miss something. Is really focusing on A, the connection to coordinated entry. B, we also know that there's some additional federal funds that are coming into play that they have talked about enabled. It could be in play to assist individuals that are willing to go into the coordinated entry program. And move through that process. So wanted to tell council. More conversations that we need to have with county staff. We're building an operational plan in terms of determining what that need is. We are also, we've reached out to Andy at Hope, we've reached out to Sarah Arnie, David Kennedy. And other individuals to get a sense of the different demographics and. And, and where the support is needed and, and we can bring, we will be bringing more information to you all based on our conversations with the county. Karen, did I miss anything?
No, Harold, I don't have anything to add unless there are questions.
All right, so let's. All right, sorry, my alarm went off. Councilmember Christensen? You're, you're on, you're on mute, Polly, and my alarm was to go get my wheat fins, but I'll wait till break. That's not what it was for.
Okay, I would, I would like to make a few statements. My neighbor across the street who has a giant contractor's van. Who would be affected by this perhaps because it hasn't been clarified in the law. Nevertheless, he has a, he owns a business down on Delaware Street. And as I think we all know, various businesses are just as affected, in fact, more so by this. Problem as residential areas. Everybody's actually affected. The situation down on Delaware Street this morning was that he came to work and people in order to sleep in their van had thrown all the material. Out of their van onto the street, which looked like an explosion of trash. So that they could sleep in their van. We just, we just can't let this go on. However, and, and we have also heard from. Left Hand Brewery that their employees come out at eleven o'clock at night sometimes and. Are subjected people who are dealing drugs and people who are threatening them or they feel, they feel threatened. I know that I've talked to the people over on Budget Hardware and there are people going to the bathroom in the bushes, there are people unloading things and dumping trash and. Dumping sewage out on the street. So I understand, we, and we all know, we have to do something about this. But. I can't, I, I don't want to create more problems. Than we already have. I want us to be clear about the fact. That it should state somewhere here that it is illegal. Or not permissible to sleep in or live in any vehicle on the public streets of Longmont. Because it creates a public safety and public health danger. If we don't say that, then we're just taking the wimpy way out by just. We're creating an ordinance. What is the purpose of the ordinance? We need to focus on the problem, which is people living in their vehicles. It's not every RV in this town. There are. Probably hundreds of contractor vans, contractor trailers. And RVs like Mr. Flowers. Who seem to think that we would not let them park in front of their house for forty eight hours, although I think it's pretty clear in the law that. They can do that. I think the ordinance as written is a little confusing and I cannot vote for it unless. It clarifies that it is illegal. To sleep in or live in any vehicle on the public streets of Longmont because it creates a public safety and public health danger. Secondly, the term sleeper vehicle, which is not a term any other municipality uses. And is actually a very strange and vague term. And if you look it up, if you Google it, it has nothing to do with RVs. I think it needs to be replaced by vehicle or. The definition of sleeper vehicle, which is slang, which should not be used in an ordinance, but it's on page four, it's on. Under four B, line sixteen, page three. It should be at the top of the ordinance, so it explains what a sleeper vehicle is since it is a, not a legal term, not a term used by. I, I don't know who uses this term, but anyway. Unless we make this law clear. I can't vote for it. Sleeper vehicle needs to be defined. At the very beginning, as we have done on page three. So those are. Three, two things that need to happen as far as I'm concerned to clarify this law and make it focus on the problem instead of. Affecting every RV owner in town. In addition to which I would like us to. List. Places that people can go. When we give, if we tag a vehicle, they need to be told. Where, what their alternatives are. There are alternatives that they can find, they can go to a place that has. There are some places down in Lafayette and various other places that do have openings for RVs. They can apply to get into the coordinated entry program. We have to, we can't just give them a ticket and threaten to tow and crush their vehicle and not give them an alternative. And I believe that January first may be cutting it a little short. To begin to work on this law. In short, I, I don't think this law is. Up to snuff for passing it tonight. But I agree, we have a horrible problem, so.
Tim, is Tim whole around? Can you, just curious, just curious, could you read the definition of sleeper vehicle that's in the ordinance, please? Is it there?
Hey, give me one second, hold on. It's page three. Four B, line sixteen. So the definition of sleeper vehicle existed in the current code where we amended it a little bit, but. What it says now is sleeper vehicle means any camper coach, trailer vehicle, motorhome, multi-purpose, purpose trailer or trailer coach. We have added recreational vehicle, vehicle and clarified that it includes any vehicle converted to serve as temporary living or sleeping accommodation.
So Tim, can you explain to me why that isn't right at the top of the ordinance? Because. You're using a term that nobody really, that is not. Used by other municipalities without defining it until three pages later.
So. We put it in with the definition section. So we are defining the term in the definition section because it's used several times throughout the code.
Yeah, well.
That's pretty commonplace for how.
Yeah, generally, if you're going to use it in more than one place, if we have the definition. Outside of a definition section, then it kind of causes people to have to go bouncing around looking for that definition. And so if it's used more than once, we tend to try to put it in the definition. Section.
Councilmember Peck? I'm sorry, yeah, councilmember Peck, I mean, councilmember Martin.
I don't think that councilwoman Christensen was finished. I'm not sure, was she? I'm not.
So go, go ahead, councilmember Christensen, if you'd like to continue, go ahead.
And make just one clarification, the, the rest of that code section appears above the definition sleeper vehicle because it's alphabetical. So that's just in the definition of abandoned or publicly kept. So it appears above sleeper, just alphabetically.
Right, and so to be clear, councilmember Christian had finished, I asked my question, then we're going on councilmember Peck, but I can go back to councilmember Christensen if she'd like to follow up.
You're on, you're on mute.
You're muted, Polly.
I would like to follow up because editorially, what is. Common throughout all editorial writing and academic writing, it's the first time you use a term, you define it. And thereafter, you may use the. Slang version of it or the acronym or whatever, but you define it in first use. I realize it's different in legal writing, but. I. You know, when most people read this law, they have no idea what. A sleeper vehicle is, particularly if you're encouraging people not to sleep in their vehicle. It seems an odd term to use to refer to the thing that you don't want them to do in the first place. Okay, anyway.
All right, councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I, I want to make a. A clarification in my vote last time, we had this up on first reading. I agreed with the sleeper vehicle part of the ordinance. And I'm going to bring up once again, I, I thank Jeff Sater for reaching out to me on this issue. But I'm going to bring it up again, explain and then make a motion. If it passes, it does. If it not, doesn't, that's the way it is. We have the, in the definition of abandoned and junk vehicles, this statement. It says, any vehicle, any vehicle. Other than a sleeper vehicle. Is going to be an abandoned and junked vehicle if it's. In a public space for forty eight hours or longer. Think about that. Any vehicle that is on a public space for forty eight hours or longer is in the definition of an abandoned and junked vehicle. So when you go down to the abatement section. That says that any abandoned or junked vehicle. Can, is in the abatement section, which is basically being towed. I totally disagree with that. Why would we have any vehicle that is parked on a public street thoroughfare? Parked for over two hours, two days become an abandoned and junked vehicle by definition? And then because it has been labeled that, it can be. Towed, impounded in the abatement section. So. That leaves that whole section up to interpretation and, and I want to make the caveat. That I totally trust our public safety department, Jeff Satter, our detectives, and that they would not. Probably target. A vehicle to be impounded. But this ordinance does not say anything about ticketing. About giving a, a warning. It just says they can be towed. So I am going to move that we. Do one of two things. We either take the wording, any vehicle out of there and define what we think a really a junked vehicle is. Or an abandoned vehicle. Or. Leave it in there and say that it will be ticketed. I understand that. When talking to Detective Satter, that he said that this is by complaint only, that these vehicles are even. Looked at. But that isn't mentioned anywhere in this ordinance. This is a law. When we have turnover in our public safety department, when we have people retiring, we don't even have a chief of police hired yet. When they look at this law. There is no way that a resident can fight this because. The public safety department is doing exactly what the law says. That they can tow a vehicle that is left for two days on a street. By complaint, but we don't know that it's by complaint. It doesn't say it. At all in there. So I move. That. What section is this? Section four. Section four, line one, where it says "any vehicle other than a sleeper vehicle," we changed, we either take that wording out and define exactly what a, what a junked vehicle is, it's not "any vehicle," and/or, or we change the wording to say that it will be ticketed.
All right, Tim, just a quick, okay, it's been moved and seconded. Tim, just a quick question on your thoughts on where the RV and junked vehicle statutes merge? Where there's over, is there crossover? Are we talking about two different issues? The same issue?
Two different.
They're two different issues, they're kind of in, they blend together. We, this, this revision isn't touching the 48-hour provision for other vehicles, except for to the reorganization, as we've discussed before.
Right.
So I see them as different, but.
Right, so, so this, so I guess, Joan, I guess this would probably, I feel this would be more appropriate to raise, and if we want to address the junked vehicle 48-hour issue, we can, we can do that, but I guess my, my concern is that, that what you're, what you just moved doesn't necessarily touch on the statute that was, that's before council.
But Mayor Bagley, it is in the ordinance that we're passing. If we are amending this ordinance now, we, I don't even know why it's in this ordinance, to be quite honest, why that's particular thing is, but if we are, if we are going to pass this ordinance, then we are passing it with that statement.
Can you, can you read the statement to us?
Sure, I'd be glad to. It says, "Any vehicle other than a sleeper vehicle left on public property, including any portion of a highway, street, alley, or other right-of-way for 48 hours or longer." It's the definition of an abandoned or junked vehicle.
And is that in this, I don't have my packet open right now.
Yes, it is.
Is that in this statute, Tim?
Yes, it's on page.
Yep, and so my question is, how does that, Tim, how does that not then take two separate issues and overlap?
This, this, this ordinance will move it in the definition, in a numbered list, but otherwise it doesn't change that, so we didn't make any change to the definition of the 48 hours, we just moved it around.
So it's the definition, the definition, and then what, what statute, if it's not this one, does that definition apply to? Because it's not, so basically what Councilmember Peck is referring to is a definition, but it's not actually the statute that, that says that you cannot have a junk, the junk vehicle statute is not this one, correct? Meaning the definition is there, because the definition section.
They do merge, they do, they do merge, so either, either of those two will both equal an abandoned or junked vehicle that can be taken care of in a later portion in the same manner.
And right now, it's 48 hours?
Yes.
Okay, so, just, and I'd just like to address, Councilmember Peck, your concern. I would totally, I would totally agree with you. However, what needs to happen is, it is complaint-driven, not because it's, we're taking somebody's word for it, it's just that's the way it happens, meaning that someone has to call and complain, or even in theory, if you're driving along and, and you just go, hey, that arbitrary car is parked on a, on the road, and I need to, we need to make sure that particular car that's parked is gonna move within 48 hours, they still get out, mark it, have to give notice, they can't just take it, and then the driver will be given notice, and they have to move it within 48 hours. But parking enforcement's not gonna do that, because, I mean, they see the car, but they'd have to stay there for 48 hours to watch it, so it doesn't, it's just not the way enforcement works.
My problem, Mayor Bagley, is that it is in the definition of an abandoned or junked vehicle. Why would we call somebody's car a junked vehicle, allowing it to be towed? Why would we?
Well, because you'd go, if you go over to, I mean, like, I'd get, I've gotten a call from two different people every quarter since I've been on council, and they complained that there are, there's a, there's a homeowner that owns eight cars, and he parks them along the street, and other people would like to use the street, but he treats it as his own parking spot. And we, the real question is, do we want people to be able to just park their cars and not move them for long periods of time? That's really, that's really what we're doing, and do we want public streets being treated like personal property? I, I think we should encourage people to park their cars in the driveway and not occupy public streets, but.
Not everybody, not everybody has a driveway in this city.
And, and, and that is, and I don't know what they do downtown, to tell you the truth, but, Councilmember Martin?
Well, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. The reason that Tim has said that that hasn't changed is because the ordinance has always been, you had to move a car every 48 hours, or it was considered abandoned, correct? Is that correct?
It is correct, and I want to clarify, it's abandoned or publicly kept, and junked is a different definition.
Okay, right, but, but nevertheless, the, the statute has always been that if you're gonna park on the street, you couldn't do it for longer than 48 hours, and that's because somebody else needs a chance at the public parking, even if it's right in front of their house, they don't own the parking in front of their house. Anybody can park there. And while I have had to tell a number of people that they did not own the parking in front of their house, I have never received a complaint about someone leaving a car for several days without moving it on the public street, except occupied sleeper vehicles, that complaint, of course, we get all the time. But I, I don't understand the reason for revisiting the part of the ordinance that's working. I mean, what we're doing right now is revisiting the part of the sleeper vehicle ordinance that's clearly not working, because it creates a public health hazard. So I, I would feel better confining the debate to that.
All right, well, if nobody else has any, we have a motion on the table, unless somebody really wants to say something, let's go ahead and vote on the motion. Mr. Hall?
One point of clarification, there is a drafting error that I would ask that the council amend.
Well, we get, the motion on the table right now is not for the, we'll, we'll come back to that in just a second, but right now, the motion is to either strike the word "any vehicle," or, what was that, what was the, what was, can you restate your motion, Councilmember Peck?
I will in a minute, but to Councilmember Martin's comment, the reason I'm bringing up is because that is part of the change in this ordinance. It has, the original wording was struck out. This is a change to this ordinance, and that is what we are voting on, all of the changes to this ordinance.
What was the change, what was it before? Because Mr. Hall just told me that it was, it's the same as it was before.
It says, "What is struck out is any sleeper vehicle or trailer parked on public property, including any portion of," they use sleeper vehicle. They added "any vehicle," they changed that to "any vehicle," or they replaced it with "any vehicle." That was the elliptical part, and that's why I brought it up.
Well, I think, is it, that was the clarification that I was asking for, because I thought that was part of the reordering. Was, Mr. Hall, could you tell us, was it, was it "any vehicle," no matter where it physically was in the ordinance, was the statute that the 48 hours applied to any vehicle?
The only change to that section is, is its ordering. So it appears as a, as a red line and, and a new insertion, just because that's how the ordinance has to be drafted, but the only change to that section was the ordering. That has not changed the language whatsoever.
Thank you. So restating that motion was either strike "any vehicle" or add that it would be, my problem is, it's in the abatement section, that the "any vehicle," I don't really know how to state it, to be quite honest, that any vehicle that, other than a sleeper vehicle, is deemed abandoned or junked per definition, be taken out of the abatement part, that it be ticketed, rather.
Hold on, hold on, one second, one second, Joan, remember that in just a second, okay? Because we're gonna have to split it into two, I'm gonna take your motion as two votes. All right, the first motion is striking "any vehicle," and then the second will be removing the language that you just said, okay? So the motion is to strike the wording "any vehicle." All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed, say nay. Nay?
Nay.
All right, the nays have it, the motion fails with Councilmember Christensen and Councilmember Peck for. The second motion will be, will be taken as a motion to strike the following language. Joan, could you read it, please?
"Any vehicle other than a sleeper vehicle left on a public property, including any portion of a highway, street, alley, or other right-of-way for 48 hours or longer, is in abandoned and junker definition."
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Well, the motion is to take it out of.
Correct, correct, the motion is to, to strike what Councilmember Peck just read. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I actually, I have a question.
All right.
So if we do that, then, I'd like to know, how would that impact, what would that do in removing that language, the ability to, I, you know, and I'm thinking more of the lines, because I've, I've had calls, and I've gone out to different areas, taken pictures, looked at stuff that was, I mean, it clearly looks like people are just dumping their RVs in the street, and we can't have that. I see that we need to take care of that, I'd take care of that piece, I'm just wondering if we strike the language, what would that do with the city's ability to be able to, to address those issues?
I assume it would make it difficult.
Well, let me, yeah, I'd like to hear.
Kind of falls apart.
Councilmember, Councilmember, let's go, let's go with Deputy, Deputy Chief Satter for a second. Deputy Chief?
Hello, thank you for letting me speak on this topic tonight. As I stated last time, in the last two years, we tagged 4,200 of these vehicles until 91, but this has a very negative impact on those neighborhoods without garages, because if somebody parks in front of your house, that has a cascading effect all the way down the street. So if we remove that language, there would be no way to move those vehicles on, and at this point, as I said the last week, we tagged those cars, so there is no cost to the owner for moving their vehicle. If we ticketed it, there would be a cost to the owner to pay a ticket, so right now, they just get a warning and ask to move their car.
Thanks, Deputy Chief.
But it would have a very negative effect on the neighborhoods, in my opinion.
All right, I, I don't want to, I don't want to cut off, I don't want to cut off debate, I can't do that, I don't have the authority to, we can keep talking, but the motion currently is just, we still have to talk about the, the ordinance, this is just the motion by Councilmember Peck wanting to strike that particular language. Does anyone want to talk specifically about the motion to strike the language that Councilmember Peck just read? Councilmember Ed Agelfering, if you have another question or issue?
Well, so I don't have, you know, I understand where Councilmember Peck is coming from, and, and I agree with it, but I don't want to be able to create another problem. I feel like we need to have a deeper discussion on, on individual pieces in the, in the ordinance, add specific language that will address some of the concerns that residents have, as well as, as well as people who maybe live in their vehicle but are also friends or have some kind of connection with the residents that they may be parking in front of. I also want to be able to have discussion on what types of prob, how are some of the solutions, how are we progressing with, coming up with some of the solutions, before we move forward with this, and then don't have any place to, to put folks, and I'm, I'm, I'm also thinking about people who work here but live in their RVs, and I know quite a few folks, and I don't want to, you know, so that they, they spend money here, they, they happen to live in their RVs, but they spend money here, they work here, they just happen to live in their RVs. I want to be able to make sure that we have solutions in place before we just rush through all this, and I know it's probably not rushing, because it sounds like it's been a discussion for a long time.
All right, again, so as we, as we continue, we're only talking about the, the motion by Councilmember Peck at this point, so we're gonna go with Councilmember Christensen and then Councilmember Martin.
So, I'm very confused about what we're actually voting on right now, but.
We're, we're voting, the, 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 the motion is to strike the language in the ordinance that reads as follows. Councilmember Peck, could you read it again, please?
But I am going to pull my motion. I am, it isn't gonna pass, and I, and I think this discussion is going on too long.
Okay, well, the, the chair will allow you to do that. Harold, it was just pulled, do you have anything to say other than that?
I wanted to say that you all have directed this, motion was made by Councilmember Christensen, seconded by Councilmember Peck, and it passed, to bring back this other component of the ordinance at a later date, and that's what I was gonna say, is that's where that conversation probably, it needs to occur, is in that ordinance that we're gonna be bringing back to you all.
All right, then that said, I'm gonna actually move ordinance 2020-57, a bill for an ordinance submitting Chapter 11 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Vehicles Abandoned, Kept on Public Property, or Junked.
Don't, don't we need a public hearing?
No, that'd be, uh, yeah, we do need a public hearing, so let's go ahead and open the public hearing.
All right, well, we do have caller 518 with their hand up for this. Caller 518, you should be able to unmute yourself, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. You know who I am, I'm John Flower, I spoke before. Just a couple of quick comments. In our homeowners association, we don't want to see old junk vehicles, vehicles being worked on in the driveways, and we have come up with a way of defining that, because we've been rewriting our covenants that maybe have helped to you. We, we simply say that if it's, if you have a vehicle, it has to be on the driveway, it can't be in your yard, and it has to be currently licensed. So that's, the wording we use is currently licensed. So I think in some of the cases, you're dealing with vehicles that are not currently licensed, nobody's using them, and I think that that's been an effective way for us to look at it. I also, just listening to the comments by council members, I absolutely agree with what Polly Christensen brought up, and also with what Joan Peck brought up. You know, those are very good points, so that's really all I wanted to say, is that I, I agree with Polly Christensen and Joan Peck's comments. I'm imploring you, please don't pass this ordinance until you had a, a chance to look at the issues that I brought up, plus the issues that some of the other callers earlier brought up, their, their valid concerns, that, like, one of the other council members just mentioned about, that there are people living in these vehicles, or they're not bad people, you know, they're working here, so you gotta deal with that whole thing. But anyway, think about the wording of currently licensed, that could be a solution to some of that discussion about junk vehicles, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in, in the, in the hearing queue?
Uh, yep, we have a few more folks, caller 137.
How many is a few?
One, two, well, three, I believe, we have left.
Okay, great.
Caller 137, 137, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Great, thank you. My name is Annie Kurtz, and I'm an attorney and Equal Justice Works Fellow at the ACLU of Colorado, which is at 303 17th Ave in Denver, and I'm here to speak in opposition to ordinance 2020-57, which I fear will undermine the health and housing stability of Longmont's most vulnerable residents at a particularly dangerous moment. This ordinance, on the one hand, as some have already stated tonight, is overly broad, abandoning. Abanning all recreational or sleeper vehicles from parking on public property in every part of the city at all hours and for any amount of time, the ordinance sweeps within its reach unobjectionable activity. This law would mean a family traveling in their RV could not stop for lunch on Main Street without threat of their vehicle being impounded during their meal. On the other hand, the reality is that the ordinance's most bitter impact would fall on the city's most marginalized residents, for whom the prohibited vehicles are a last resort for securing affordable shelter, rest, safety, privacy, and access to other basic human needs in Longmont. But punishing people merely for sheltering in their vehicles when they have no other meaningful option raises constitutional concern. Courts have concluded that it violates the Eighth Amendment to punish someone for sleeping outside on public property when no indoor option is available to them. Punishing people for sleeping in their vehicles when they lack meaningful alternatives raises the same concern. Longmont Safe Parking Lots closed to RVs, and the other lots that, to my knowledge, have been explored by the city, would provide temporary accommodation at best. At the same time, the Point in Time Survey, a known undercount of those experiencing homelessness in Boulder County, revealed inadequate shelter space for those who might seek it. Not to mention that during this surging pandemic, crowded shelters only jeopardize the health of guests in the larger community, such that the CDC warns against clearing encampments of unhoused residents unless individual housing units are available. Colorado faces an affordable housing crisis, a financial crisis, and a public health crisis. And winter is coming. Now is not the time to strip a crucial safety net from Longmont Housing and Secure, whose ranks are only predicted to swell when COVID-19-related eviction moratoria eventually expire. Given the inadequacy of housing and shelter in Longmont, the proposed outright ban on RV parking will force people to choose between leaving the city they call home and living on the streets. ACLU of Colorado urges the City Council not to pass ordinance 2020-57. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next caller?
All right, caller number 418. Caller 418, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes, this is Stan Pol again. And I, I'd like to really put it to you that you're treating people that are living in vehicles as some sort of enemy, that are something that we need to expel from the community. And I I've listened to Peck. Peck has several times says, why can't they go to Will County? Why can't they, that, you know, these are residents of the community that through policies that the City Council has been following, has made this problem. The town has expanded, and we have not expanded places where people run into problems. And there's people who are disabled. There's people who are who are working and they're trying to save money so they could maybe get something. And so you're rushing this, and there's a lot of things, like, when you put a tag on somebody's vehicle saying you're going to impound it, by law, you have to give a person a chance to have a hearing before his property is taken. Now, I had the experience of one having a vehicle impounded illegally. And when I went to try to get an impound hearing, I was arrested and put in jail, and I was prosecuted for trespassing. That is blatantly, blatantly unconstitutional. Because if somebody's property is getting taken, you are required to provide him with a hearing before the property is taken. And after the property is taken, within 24 hours, he needs to have a hearing. When you presented the little card that people have put on their vehicles, there is no notice on that that people have a right to a hearing. And other communities like Santa Barbara, California, where my sister lives, they simply allow people to park in in the parking rides at night, and they have a little porta potty there, and then the people leave leave in the morning. There are alternatives. The thing is, is that you guys seem to be of the idea that we have to leave. And like I've said, with a coordinated entry, you know, you sign up for that, all of a sudden, you're not a resident of of City of Longmont. Yeah, that is some sort of expulsion plan. Now, if you have coordinated entry, it has to be for the City of Longmont, not to be sent off to Kansas or something like that. So what I suggest, and it's what I have been saying, is that under, how out of open meeting laws, people are supposed to be allowed to be involved in the legislative process. If you are excluding any group from that.
That that's about 3 minutes 20 seconds. We're going to have to go on to the next caller. But thank you. All right, next caller?
Caller 606. Are you able to unmute yourself? Caller 606.
Is this the last caller?
This is the last caller. 606, are you able to unmute yourself? I think it's star six.
There we go.
There we go.
Good evening, Council. My name is Monique Myers. I actually reside in Boulder, but I have a business that happens to operate in a small toy hauler, which could be considered an RV. And it's mostly a question. Uh, I teach sewing classes out of the RV, and I would park for, say, two hours at a time in a neighborhood. Would my case fall under your regulations? Thank you.
All right, that concludes the public hearing. Let's go ahead. And did you get that last question, Tim?
I think I got most of it. It was a toy hauler that has been converted?
Yeah, that's what it sounded like. It would be a vehicle that's been converted to sleep in. So yes, right?
It depends. So the converted to to get it converted to sleep in, I imagine that is an overt conversion, some sort of like you have a school bus that you have taken all the seats out of and really changed it. So I'd have to see. It seems like a judgment call.
All right, well, I'm going to go ahead. Councilmember Martin, you're going to be next, but I'm going to move ordinance 2020-57, a bill for an ordinance submitting Chapter 11 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Vehicles Abandoned, Kept on Public Property, or Junked.
Second.
All right, it's been second. Councilmember Martin?
I would like to say that the last woman who called didn't say anything about using her vehicle to sleep in. She said something about using it to teach from. So it's like a bookmobile only for crafts. And she parks it in a neighborhood for two to four hours, which means that she wouldn't come under the violation of the statute at all. And I, it may be a problem with organization of this statute because, you know, I read it, and I think it's clear that, you know, you're not in violation of anything until you leave a vehicle in one place for 48 hours or longer, or occupy it while it's parked, like for sleeping. And, uh, you know, if if neither of those things happen, then somebody, then then, you know, all these people that are concerned that they're going to get in trouble, a fall afoul of this law are just imagining this that because they're not finding where it says, you know, they're not associating parking and the duration of time that has to elapse before they're in violation. So I'm not sure. I'd like, I'd like Mr. Hole to talk about that and and explain to us where it says, you know, that that the vehicle has to stay in one place for 48 hours before it can be tagged.
So I may have missed. I I think I made an assumption that she said she slept in the vehicle or had modified it for sleeping. The definition that we're changing, that this ordinance is really focusing on, is a sleeper camper coach, a camper trailer, motorhome, multipurpose trailer, trailer coach, or recreational vehicle includes converted to serve as temporary living accommodations. So something that is really focused on somebody, on being accessible for somebody to sleep in. Her vehicle, it sounds like, would fall under just in any vehicle category. That one would need 48 hours, as we've discussed earlier.
Right. And and in fact, the the thing that people aren't understanding is is that any vehicle can park for less than 48 hours in a designated parking place on a street, right? In in any place that's not marked as no parking. And if they don't, if they leave it there for less than 48 hours, they're fine, correct?
As long as they follow other traffic laws, they aren't impeding the flow of traffic, those kinds of things.
And there's a valid license. Yeah, okay. So none of those things are changing. Is that correct? This is only changing what happens with a sleeper vehicle.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Um, I want to thank Councilwoman Martin for bringing up the this subject. The fact that both the mayor and the Assistant City Attorney, who both heard the same thing we heard, both said it would cover it, means that it's confusing to people. You know, there are lots of people like this woman who have mobile services that they perform, whether it's cutting dog hair or human hair or delivering classes, as this last woman said, or plumbing services, electrical services. I mean, these are exactly the people I, they're making a living using their vehicles, and they're not parked for more than a few hours usually in front of or anywhere. I don't want them to feel that they are going to be impacted by this. And that's precisely what I think is what people are feeling. And as Councilwoman Martin said, this this woman just teaches classes. She's, and she said quite clearly, I teach, I converted this to teach classes. I'm parked for a couple of hours in front of a place. And I applaud people like that who are, you know, they're entrepreneurs. They may not be wealthy, but they're they're making a decent living for themselves and their family. I don't want to discourage them.
I guess seeing no hands, just, I guess, again, there's a difference of fact. If that woman meant, I'm going to be sleeping in it, yes. If she's not sleeping in it, then no. So the the law is pretty clear, and it would depend on the facts. So, all right, there's a motion on the, there's a motion on the table, but Councilmember Edogal Fereng?
So, you know, I want to clarify, so that the state, the question or the comment from Ms. Hertz, Annie Hertz, about a family who maybe have their RV and they park in front of a restaurant. So it's not going to be towed, or it's not going to be tagged. Um, you know, I think, you know, I'm just, as I look through, I keep scrolling up and down and trying to see, you know, some of it's, some of the language in there is kind of left to interpretation. And when I look at, you know, it's complaint only, but does it stipulate that in here? I don't, I don't see that, unless I'm missing something. I've looked at it so many times now, I'm, it's all blending in. And so, you know, so I guess looking at specifics in that. Um, the other thing, too, is, you know, if somebody's parking their RV in front of their house, and as the the caller had had stated, when he's having to let his, when they come back and they have to leave it out, you know, drain the fridge and do all whatever they have to do before they can put it away, it might be longer than 48 hours. What if they don't get along with their neighbor and their neighbor is just calling and complaining? Where where's that kind of, I just feel like there's, it's, it's left open to interpretation and too much, too many variables. I.
They'd have to, to answer your question, they'd have to show up and mark it and start the clock.
Okay.
So in order, in order to be, in order to lose, in order to win a case in court, you'd have to mark it so that they can say, okay, now we're starting the 48 hour clock.
Now we're starting the 48 hours. So it's 48 hours from the time that it is tagged.
Not not, yeah, we don't, we don't take the neighbor's word for it. Then law enforcement shows up or parking enforcement says, I'm going to count the time.
So can we have something stipulated in language so it's very clear to residents? Would that be helpful?
Is that necessary, in your opinion, Mr. Hole?
No, I think in terms of clarifying that for residents, I I I don't know if I have a comment there in terms of how we would, it would actually operate in act. We would still have to prove our case that it's been there for 48 hours, just as the mayor has commented. And while I'm speaking, Mr. Mayor, I did have one provision that we need to make before any any final say here. Um, the effective date on Section 7 is 2020. It should read 2021.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peck?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Bagley. For the loading and unloading, there is no time stipulation. Can I read this portion so everybody understands? There is no 48 hour thing according to this. It says, "Active loading or unloading means the period of time in which a person or persons are physically engaged in the labor of loading or or unloading from an apartment, condominium, townhouse, home, or business." There's no 48 hour stipulation that I can see. Is that correct, Mr. Hole?
48 hours applies only to only to vehicles other than sleeper vehicles. There is a permit that you can get, and we have the permit section to have seven days.
Right, but if they're loading or unloading their camper, they can take the time they need to load or unload it. There's no time stipulated here. Is that correct?
As as long as they're actively loading and unloading, yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Marsh Martin?
Thanks. I just would like to say that I think we're spending way too much time on this because when I read the ordinance, I thought that it was clear. And I've been giving people advice for the last five or six days, consistent with what Mr. Hole is saying, the ordinance says. So, um, yeah, I just, I I think we're making a tempest in a teapot here, and we should just vote.
All right, is anyone else opposed to that? Dr. Waters?
I just want to clarify. The e- even if if somebody was not in the active actively loading or unloading, uh, because it's, because they need two or three days to load or unload, absent a complaint, somebody would have the flexibility to load and unload for as long as they need to load and unload. Is that fair? Tim?
My understanding from from staff is that we, this staffing requirements are that we are going to respond to complaints, but that's going to be a question probably for for Jeff.
For Jeff, then? Well, we just anticipate that Jeff's response would be, yeah, it's complaint driven. And I did, so I want to make a point that the current, our current practice under the current ordinance is all complaint driven. Jeff's on the screen. Is that true, Jeff?
That's correct, except for some really extreme examples.
So unless unless the council thinks that somehow in the current ordinance, that the our, the code enforcement and public safety is operating inconsistently with the current ordinance, the current ordinance doesn't make any reference to the requirement for it to be complaint driven. I mean, you'd be adding something to it, to the, to a new ordinance that has been unnecessary in the current ordinance when it comes to implementation or enforcement. And I don't know why we would have to add language that's not in the current code, current ordinance to do what we're doing under the current ordinance. John?
All right, there's a motion on the table for ordinance 2020-57. All in favor of passage of ordinance 2020-57 on second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
All right, Joan, were you an aye? Okay. Susie, were you an aye? Okay, so the ordinance passes 6. Okay, so the ordinance passes six to one with Councilmember Christensen opposed. All right, let's go on. So nothing was removed from the consent agenda. Let's move on. Actually, should we take a brief three-minute break real quick before we move on to general business? We got a bunch of resolutions we're going to hammer through. Shouldn't be too hard, but should we take a two-minute, three-minute break? All right, let's take a two-minute, three-minute break. See you in a second. All right, we're back. One, two, three, four, five, missing Erin and Marcia. We're not missing Marcia. Pop-tart people. Too bad we're virtual, I'd share. All right, we're all back. All right, let's go ahead and I moved that we, let's go on to general business. I moved that we recessed the Longmont City Council and convene as the Board of Directors, the Longmont General Improvement District Number One.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Resolution LGID 2020-06 is a resolution of the Board of Directors, the Longmont General Improvement District Number One, adopting the annual budget for the district for the fiscal year 2021. Do we have a motion?
I'll move Resolution 2020-6.
I'll second that. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. All right, Resolution LGID 2020-2020-06 passes unanimously. I moved that we adjourn as the Longmont General Improvement District Number One, Board of Directors, and convene as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority.
Second.
All right, that's been moved by myself and seconded by Councilmember Christensen, I believe. Is that what that hand was for? Okay, then let's go ahead and vote. All in favor of convening as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. Acting as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority, Resolution LURA 2020-01, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority, adopting the annual budget for the authority for the fiscal year 2021. All in favors, or, do we have a motion? I'll move that.
I can't see it on my screen, right, move it. All right, we're good.
All right, so there's a motion for Resolution LURA-2020-01. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. I moved that we adjourn as the Board of Commissioners, Longmont Urban Renewal Authority, and reconvene as Longmont City Council.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Item 12C. Resolutions of the Longmont City Council approving allotment contract and escort agreement and two allotment transfer agreements for the Windy Gap Firming Project. Do we have a motion for Resolution 2020-116?
So moved.
I'll second that. All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Martin, seconded by Dr. Waters. All in favor of Resolution 2020-16, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental allotment contract between the city of Longmont, acting by and through its water utility enterprise, the Windy Gap Firming Project Water Activity Enterprise for capacity of the Windy Gap Firming Project. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That motion carries, Harold, unanimously. All right, do we have a motion for Resolution 2020-117?
So moved.
All right, I'll second that. So we have a motion for Resolution 2020-117, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental escort agreement between the city of Longmont, acting by and through its water utility enterprise, the Windy Gap Firming Project Water Activity Enterprise for the Windy Gap Firming Project. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion passes unanimously. All right, Item 12-3, Resolution 2020-118, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Longmont and the city of Loveland for the sale and purchase of Windy Gap Firming Project storage capacity. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that. All right, any questions or debate on this? Didn't think so. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. Resolution 2020-119, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Longmont and the city of Fort Lepton for the sale and purchase of Windy Gap Firming Project storage capacity. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Martin, seconded by Dr. Waters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. All right, now we've got some resolutions. The Longmont City Council approving the Third Amendment, the redevelopment and reimbursement agreement, and partial assignment to 320 Granary Owner LLC for 210 Emory Street and consent to a development concept plan for 110 Emory Street. Taking it one at a time, do we have a motion for Resolution 2020-120, a resolution of the Longmont City Council consenting to the development concept plan for 110 Emory Street?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Martin, seconded by Councilmember Peck. Any discussion on the matter before we vote? All right, seeing none, all in favor of Resolution 2020-120, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. All right, and then next, Resolution 2020-121, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the Third Amendment to the redevelopment and reimbursement agreement and partial assignment and assumption to 320 Granary Owner LLC for 210 Emory Street and 320 Second Avenue. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
All right, that was moved by Dr. Waters, and was it seconded by Councilmember Peck?
No, Martin.
Okay, it was seconded by Councilmember Martin. All right.
Mayor, Tony Secone, redevelopment manager. If you're interested, Brian Bagley, the developer of 150 Main, which is the South Main Station project.
Brian Bear.
You said Brian Bagley. I am not, I'm not developing crap.
Brian Bear.
But yeah, I appreciate him being here. Anybody have any questions for the developer? Can we vote?
Well, he has a short presentation to give you an update on the status, if you're interested.
Yes.
Well, all right, well, if he wants to risk the nays, sure, go ahead and talk.
Okay, thank you.
But the lesson is, you always be quiet when you got the votes. But let's go ahead and hear what he has to say. Hope it's good.
I'm happy to let you vote.
Well, go ahead. All right, Councilmember Christensen wants to hear what he has to say.
Yeah, no, real quick, wanted to do three things, and I'll move quickly because I know it's getting late, but I think these will be valuable for you, and thank you for giving me the time this evening. This is all relevant to the TAP agreement, but I wanted to do a quick update on South Main Station for you. Talk also, an update on the granary, because these things are kind of all tied together. And then finish it with the, a few slides for the site plan for 110 Emory, which is really the purpose of this presentation. So I'm not sure who's driving the presentation, but if you could pull up my slides, that'd be great. And I'll fly through it pretty quick if you get advanced to the next slide. As you all know, these are the chunks, these are the pieces. Phase one is 150 Main, where the red star is. Next slide, please. Quick update on leasing. We are, actually, as of today, I think we just hit seventy percent leased. So it's been pretty incredible during COVID to get that kind of velocity, really over the last four months. It's been very robust. There's some interesting demographic data here that I thought you might find interesting. Sixty percent of the tenants are under age thirty, fifteen percent over age fifty. Over a third of them are from Boulder County, thirty percent are out of the area. So probably not what we would have predicted. And just very interesting information as, you know, these new projects come into downtown. Retail's twenty-three percent leased. We've got several LOIs that we're working through right now, which would be new companies to downtown in the sort of food and beverage and retail world. Next slide, please. Building five, which is the last building, if you recall, we only built four out of the five buildings. We started building five, we're about ninety percent done with CDs. We'll be submitting that in January for a building permit. And we expect to start that building probably in April, May of 2021. That'll be an additional sixty-one units, and it'll finish the two blocks. Next slide, please. Jumping over to the granary where the red star is, I think you all know that building. We were really moving quickly on the rehab of the actual old granary building. Then COVID hit, and really, as you all know, really slowed down the whole food and beverage world, not to mention the whole world. We put that on hold, but we've actually brought that back. Next slide, please. We've sort of flipped the strategy there. We were originally going to do the granary building, which you see in blue, is now phase two. And then we were going to do the multifamily, their townhome apartments in phase two. We've flipped that, and now we're moving forward with our new phase one, which will be twenty townhome-style apartments. We've already completed our pre-app, and we're anticipating a site plan submission in January. So that'll really start to take that quarter block and get that moving. The, as far as the granary, as soon as the, you know, things start to, restrictions start to lift and some changes start to happen with COVID, we will start to pursue that again. The last piece here is 110 Emory, which is where the red star is. That's the four-acre piece that's directly east of phase one. Next slide, please. This will happen in two phases as well. Many of you, you've been out to the site, and I've showed you around. There's an old Butterball Spice Building down at the south end of the property here. This is where they stored all the spices. It's about a nineteen thousand square foot warehouse building. We're going to actually rehab that building into an adaptive reuse. I'll show you what that's going to look like. That's phase one, nineteen thousand square feet. We're hopefully about inside thirty days of final approvals with staff on the site plan and the replat. We've already submitted for a building permit, so we're parallel tracking, and we hope to start construction in December and deliver that building in March. And what's interesting about that building is it fits in with the steam project and everything else that's going on. We've got some maker space, we've got some service retail, we've got some office. So it'll really help to activate the daytime use in this area. Just north of that is the phase two property, which is roughly about three acres. We've got that laid out for a hundred and fifty-five to a hundred and sixty additional units, multifamily units. These will be smaller apartments with a lower price point. And it's a smaller project, so they won't be as amenitized as South Main Station. But our view is this whole neighborhood is becoming an amenity. And with everything we're doing in the surrounding blocks, we think that this is going to be another real popular place to live and a nice development downtown. So that'll be two four-story buildings with tuck-under parking, and there'll be some site parking. There'll be a corner amenity building up on Second and Emory. And we anticipate that to start next year in terms of entitlements. And construction for that building will start in 2022, right about when we finish building five of phase one. So this site plan here is really the crux of this presentation to show you what we're doing on the 110 Emory property so that we can move forward with the approval of the TAP credits for this particular property. Please advance slide. Couple of slides here just showing you what the building looks like and how it breaks up. Next slide. Some rendering images, we're going to be sort of going in a sort of urban look, something from out of sort of the Rhino District down in Denver. Next slide, please. Same things here, so we're taking an old metal building, sprucing it up, putting a lot of storefront and glass and windows in it to make it more transparent, make it feel a little more retail, a little more active. Next slide, please. Here's just a snapshot of the phase two with the apartments. Next slide. This is, we're starting to elevate those units and bring them up so you can see it's a little more, I would say, a little more modern-looking than phase one. And as I said, these will be slightly smaller units with a lower price point. Next slide. So in summary, 110 Emory is property five in the TAP credit agreement. I'm sure you don't have that agreement in front of you, but I wanted to identify that. We're seeking concept plan, implementation plan approval from council per Section Nine of that agreement, which is a process that we agreed to as part of the TAP agreement. Our plan is consistent with the first and main transit redevelopment plan, which was one of the key things that we had to qualify for. And it also meets the downtown Longmont master plan. So those two things, we believe we meet. And phase one, this building, the warehouse building that I showed you, rehab will be done in April, May of 2021. And then we expect the phase two, which would be the hundred and sixty apartments, to be done sometime in 2023. So that gives you an idea of an update of where we are with South Main Station, a preview of what we're going to be doing on the granary property, and what we're doing right now with 110 Emory. So thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. You've been slogging away at this for a long time.
Tell me about it.
And I thank you for a lot of thoughtful design and a lot of varied design, and a lot of it's working out very, very well, I think. I also want to thank you for putting in, I don't know, the smaller apartments. There's a huge need for that in Longmont, that's huge. I don't know if these will be single-room occupancy, like studio apartments, or... or if they'll be slightly larger than that, but that's what we really need. Nobody's been building that for a long time. So anyway, I just wanted to thank you for that and ask you about what the price point is for those single room units.
Are you talking about for the 110 Emory?
Yeah, the smaller apartments.
Yeah, we, we haven't priced them yet, but they will be smaller square footage wise than South Main Station with a larger focus on studios and one bedrooms.
Yeah, good. So what, about what size would those studios be?
I don't know what the studios would be exactly, but we're, we're targeting about a 700 square foot average across the whole project.
Oh, that's pretty big as far as.
Well, that, that includes the, the, any two bedrooms that we might do all the way down to the studio. So to put that in, in, in perspective for you, at South Main Station, we're at 100, we're at 862 average. Those will be quite a bit smaller.
Yeah. Well, thank you, because you know, when this started, everybody's, I mean, you, you know that this was a very difficult project, you know better than anybody else. And difficult to finance, difficult to, because of the, the mitigation, the environmental mitigation you had to do. And, but the whole idea was this would really be a game changer for lower downtown. I hope we can find something that is equally as interesting for North Main, which has sort of gotten short end of the stick in many ways in our development things. But I, I want to thank you. I do think this will be a really enormous addition to our town. Getting people to live downtown is, will change everything. So thank you for what you're doing.
Appreciate that.
All right. Is there anyone opposed to the resolution? All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. I believe there was a motion made, correct? Who made that motion? Dawn?
Mayor, Councilmember Waters made the motion. Marcia seconded.
Okay, all in favor of resolution 2020-121? Say aye.
Aye.
I almost said nay, just to, just to prove a point, but aye. All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, the motion carries unanimously. All right, let's go ahead and move on to E, discussion regarding council members' roles and responsibilities as City of Longmont Advisory Board liaisons. I put this on because there's some question as to what are our roles as liaisons? As we all know, that this is a council that I as mayor and each of us is city council people. We cannot act individually. It requires four of us. And so as a liaison, are we taking an action role? Or is it a communication role? Or is it a, what, what is our role? And so I think all of us have been behaving in different ways with different assumptions. And so we're going to talk about it. Who'd like to start? Councilmember Martin, and we'll go Dr. Waters.
Yeah, and since this was Dr. Waters' suggestion, I probably should have let him talk first, but I've been very quiet this evening. So I'm going to talk. If I have found that the role of the council person tends to vary a lot from one board to the next. So for example, the senior advisory board, which I have found to be both active and effective, often has questions for me about what the council needs to hear in order to make changes or offer support. They often are interested in, in information about what's going on between the city and the state legislature. They're often interested in, in, oh, you know, CML type information. And so it's, it's, it really is a partnership where, you know, they're, they are looking to, to understand policy better so, so that they can turn it into actions that serve their special constituency. In, in other, other boards like Art in Public Places, for example, I feel much more like an observer, you know, they have a very set plan of activity and they do that in a very organized way. And they really don't need very much from the city council. So, you know, there's a continuum. I think that, that we need to attend because I, I think part of our duties are to the council. I think that we should know if an advisory board isn't working, isn't functioning right. And, and as council members, it may be our job to take action in terms of city policy that might correct that.
Dr. Waters? Dr. Waters, then Councilmember Peck.
Personally, I've just had a couple of experiences where it caused me to inquire about, do we have, do we have any guidance in terms of what our, our responsibilities are? If, if I thought I was clear in the role, at least how I, what I do to fulfill the role in the form of responsibilities. And, and was surprised to, to learn, I should have asked this a long time ago, that there's virtually nothing in writing that guides council member activity, which seemed peculiar to me, especially since we went to some lengths to create greater, to raise expectations for applicants to boards and commissions, to set some standards for attendance for them at boards and commissions as applicants and as participants for boards and commissions, that we had, we'd never asked for feedback. And I see here that the, that we would collect feedback for. So I, I have no idea whether or not what I'm doing, how it varies from what others are doing and what you might be doing that would be more productive from which I can learn. I mean, there's just a range of things. And to model for boards and commissions what it is that we're expecting from them. So I think, I think, I think it would be helpful to have some guidance. And this leaves degrees of freedom, but set some standards for, for what they can expect from us just as what we've done, it sets some standards in terms of what we can expect from them.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. To Councilwoman Marcia's point, I agree with her in that each board and commission is very different. And I have made a remark, perhaps it should have been in a, in a motion, that I think somewhere on this agenda, we should hear from, a report from other council members as to what has been going on with their boards and commissions. And because we don't know what each, how each one interacts or what it is they need or how we should interact with them. I also, a couple of years ago, made the motion that we have the Friday morning session specifically for board and commission reports. So each one of us knows what's going on with the other board and commission and we can see and judge how we are acting and is this what we need? Do we need to act in a different way? Do we need different things from different commissions? So I, I don't think a resolution is the way to do it, mainly because a standard that is an umbrella for all boards and commissions, they're all different. We all have to have different. I, I would rather have a communication first about what each board and commission that we are liaisons for, what is going on with them? How we interact? What do they need? What is working and what is not? And then come up with as a council, a, a format that can be changed. I don't like the idea that we would communicate with each other by email as to what our board or whatever is doing, because there's no interaction there. It's just, it's just an email, but I, I firmly believe we need reports. I want to know what Arts in Public Places are doing and not just from the minutes, but from the liaison. I want to know what, I, I would love to tell you what's going on with Dr. Cog, with NADA, with RTD, but there's no format for that. And, you know, some of the, the higher boards that I'm on, they have a place in the agenda where the boards that met the week before, their liaisons give a report. This is what's working. This isn't what working. This board is not following the work plan of city council. Do we need to change it? Is it important that they do? And I, I would rather have one-on-one than emails. So I won't vote for this, even though I do believe that we need to have interaction. And I have brought that up in the past on two different ways to do it. But I'm glad that we are going to have the discussion about it finally.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes, I, I, I appreciate what Councilwoman Martin said. I think that we've all observed that every single board is very different. And our difference, there, there is a huge difference in our responsibility if we are a voting member of something versus whether we are merely a liaison. A liaison is really not supposed to be. A liaison has no voting power or any other power. They're supposed to just communicate with each other. But as Councilwoman Peck has pointed out, she did ask for us to put something on the agenda so that we had an opportunity of, at every meeting of city council to comment on various things going on. When I see something that's going on that I think is interesting as a city council, I try to mention it at the end of the night, but of course, we're all pretty tired by the end of the night. I do think we can certainly expect that council members will actually go to their meetings. And I do think that it would be useful to, if they miss more than two meetings without, I mean, we hold the members of the advisory boards to the fact that if they have more than two unexcused absences, that they can be voted off the board. I think, certainly think that would be a reasonable thing to expect of our city council members. And I, I believe that most of us do that. We go to the meetings and. So I don't really see a reason for this resolution because it, it, it's kind of like babysitting us, you know? We really ought to know better than any of this. Anyway, I, things like check with the city council, the whole of city council to confirm council positions before representing council positions to assigned boards and commissions. I, um, these often come up when you're at the meeting and there's no way that you could consult with all the city council members to see what they think before you voice your opinion or, I mean, no one thinks that we stand for every single thing. That as individuals, it's obvious to a board that we're expressing our individual opinion. If they ask me what I think that city council will say if they bring something forward, I don't speak, for instance, as a city, as whole, as being able to give them an opinion of what everybody on city council may, might think. I try to imagine what city council, some of the questions they might have so they can be thinking about those before they bring something before us. I, I don't think it's a good idea to invite anonymous feedback. We get in, people can give us anonymous, people can give us feedback all the time and they do already. We don't need text for more feedback. So I, I, I still think it would be useful to have the Friday morning meeting. But what I thought it would be, would be, as I said, patterned after what Rick Fitzgerald does at the senior center, everybody gets five minutes. That would be seven of us, so that would be 35 minutes. Then we can have a few more comments, then we can go home. But we could also, sorry, I'm looking for my, we could also just have that time. We could just have that time on the agenda where if people have something that they need to say to the whole of city council about something that's either coming up or something that has happened, we should take that opportunity because it is the only time we get to find out what people think. It's really nice that the city portal right now has, because of Longmont Public Media, they have filming, films of everything and they also have the agenda. It's very organized and people can check into this if they want. But frankly, I would rather have the city liaison say, okay, I went to the Sustainability Advisory Board and these are the topics they discussed. There's nothing that really relates to city council right now. Or, you know, just I went, nothing much was discussed. We have to be very careful too about, sometimes an advisory board is always advising about either a department or sometimes it's a private entity that we give money to. We have to be very careful to respect their privacy and to respect the fact that what we say in public can have very bad repercussions on them. And so we don't want to. I just think we have a very. We have to be very careful about what we say about our advisory board meetings because sometimes people don't really want us to make things public. They want to, they feel like they can trust us to not explain all the difficulties they're having. Anyway, I, I don't think this, I'm glad that we brought this forward to discuss it. I don't think this resolution hits the mark, but, and I disagree with some of the things said here. But I do think it's, I'm glad we discussed it. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. So just to echo a couple of things, I absolutely agree with the sentiment that not all boards and commissions are created equal in the sense that there's definitely some where we're actually voting members of. And I think that becomes an even larger impetus to make sure that you're attending those meetings. Otherwise, you're forfeiting a vote as, as, you know, a council member representing the council. For instance, in Visit Longmont, for instance, we are a vote there. Then you have commissions such as planning and zoning and historic preservation, where it's actually probably inappropriate to interact too much with them as oftentimes those things can appeal, be appealed to council. And so it's best sometimes just to simply observe. I don't really have, going specifically to the resolution offered by Councilmember Waters, I don't specifically have any problems with the bulleted points listed. The only thing that, that concerns me is that if we make some of these requirements so standardized and to a certain extent, a bit onerous for certain members in the sense that this could become a barrier to folks who would like to run for office for the City of Longmont as far as starting to dictate so specifically maybe absences from certain boards or attendance issues or, or certain things like that to the point where, you know, I know for, for me, for instance, sometimes it's difficult to attend certain meetings. And that's just part of being a, a younger married person, working full-time. And, you know, you, life comes at you in different ways throughout your life as, as you, you know, continue on the journey. And so my time requirements may not be the same. And like I said, I just worry about that becoming a barrier for other people wanting to run for office. So we make sure that we have the kind of diversity of, of representation that the city really deserves. So that's my only problem with really specifying a lot of things. Like I said, I don't really have problems with the bolded points that were provided in the resolution because I think they were, they, they provided enough leeway for us as elected representatives of the community to have some sort of, you know, judgment as to whether we're really missing the mark or not. To be unseated because of liaison attendance issues doesn't seem like it would be appropriate for. To be unseated because of liaison attendance issues doesn't seem like it would be appropriate for a city council member regardless. Outside of that, like I said, it seems like a pretty straightforward and logical things that we should be considering as liaisons. And those are just my two cents on it. I, I know this is a discussion, so I don't think we necessarily need a motion. So I'll be interested to see any, any more opinions on this at this time.
Councilor Peck.
It wasn't that important, no. I'm checking with all of city council before we take a position. You know, in Dr. Cog, we always have positions on different bills that are coming before senate, the state senate or legislature and I, I have to abstain on most of them because we don't get those bills maybe a couple of weeks to take a council vote on after the Dr. Cog meeting. So it would be impossible to get councils input on that. And there are some things that I worked very closely with Phil Greenwald and Tyler Stamey to get input on something that's coming on the agenda at Dr. Cog or NADA. And they advised me on how we should vote for the city. So that, some of these just don't work on, on all of our boards and commissions. It isn't that I don't think we should not correspond, communicate. I don't like the word correspond because that leaves out any one-on-one talking or telephone calls. Communicate would be a better word for me in that. I, I would love to communicate what we're doing on some of those boards. We just don't have the agenda to do it. We don't have the platform and that's what I would like to, to see happen. And after we learn what the liaisons are saying about their different boards, then perhaps we can, at that point, come up with, with some points that, that all liaison should always follow. But, but I think they're going to be very general. I can't see how they can be specific.
Let's go Dr. Waters.
Yeah, I just, for me, I, I run in, as I said, there were some experiences that provoked me to, to wonder about, do we have any guidelines? And I, and I, maybe I'm the only one, I suspect I'm not, on the only member of the council, who from time to time is interacting with somebody who's a member of a board of commission. And I'm wondering, why are you talking to me? And the answer is because the person who's assigned to my, my, my board of commission, the council member, doesn't show up. And I'd like somebody, you know, to hear what my concerns are. And I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but I don't know what to do with that. Other than to say, I, you know, you go talk to that person. I, I have had, I have had the experience of puzzling over, and I'm not, this is not Councilmember Peck, when you're voting on a, on a commission, it is when a board member of this council represents to a board of commission, a position of the council. That I scratch my head and think, where'd that position come from? Because that's not the position that I think we took. It's a, it's a, it's a surprise to me. Because I think it's not an accurate portrayal. And it would have been a matter of courtesy if nothing else, for that council member to have checked with the rest of us to say, I just want to confirm, this is the position that we're, that we're representing to this, to the city or to this board commissioner or anybody. So I, when I run into those things, there's nothing to turn to in terms of guidance for me or for anybody else. And I, in, in absence, anything that we could point people to, I guess we could come to these sessions and, and then talk about them as one-offs. I've had this experience last week. You know, and if it's, if it's me, then I'd want to hear about it. And if this is the only time to hear about it, then I'd want to hear about it. But, but to ignore them, I think is irresponsible. Which is what is happening now. And for us, to set a higher standard for the, for members of boards and commissions than we would apply to ourselves, I also think is irresponsible. So this not, may not be the right set of, of responsibilities for fulfilling the role. But to not want to hear that, the councilmembers Christensen about not, you know, wanting to hear anonymous feedback, that's, that's how we evaluate, that's how we get evaluative feedback from folks. Is to say, you don't have to put your name on it, tell us what's working and what's not. And to say that we're not interested in that feedback, again, I think is irresponsible. So, you know, we can walk away from it, but, but I'm, but if, but I don't know what else to do then when I run into it. It's except to bring it to a council meeting and say, okay, here was the problem that I heard last week. How do we go about solving it, whether it's me or any other member of council?
Councilor Martin, we'll go with Councilmember Christensen.
I think that to adopt this resolution, we would need to, I'm sorry, I'm having cat problems here. We would, we would need to do something different.
Marcia, you disappeared.
I know, I'm back. The, a little derailed, sorry. I, I think that the idea of, of communicating individually with, with council members to make sure that a potential representation of the council's position is not the right way to go about this. In fact, it might be construed as making policy outside of the public meeting. If we did that, in, in a couple of my boards, I do get asked questions like that. And my usual example, usual answer is, I don't believe council has taken a position on that. I mean, obviously, you know, in many cases, the council has taken a position on it and I know what it is. But otherwise, the answer is the council hasn't taken a position. And the role of the, an advisory board is to offer advice. You know, it would help us, it would help the senior population if council took this position. If council funded, you know, back in the old days, via services to get people to council meetings, for example, was, was one policy that the senior advisory board offered as advice to the council. So I, I do have, I do have a disagreement with that. I think we do need, in my, my complaint about most of the internal advisory boards is that they don't offer enough advice to the council. And I would, I would like it if they were more active in, in that respect. Some of them are more discussion groups that never yields anything up to council. And while it's fine to have discussion groups, they're not really fulfilling their, their charter by only doing that. But then that comes back around to, it's a standard for the board and not for the liaison. I'd have to give more thought to what we do about that.
All right, and we're going to go with Councilmember Christensen and then I'm going to cut off discussion unless there's a motion. Go ahead, Councilmember Christensen.
Yeah, I appreciate what Councilwoman Martin said about this. I do think that, you know, the original purpose of advisory boards was to give the public at large, any member of the public, a voice in local government and to help them understand local government. We have now, it is true, we have changed, we have preference people with higher education and I don't think that's necessarily a good thing. We have made it intimidating for anyone who does not have a college education or who is not upper middle class to be on these boards. I also do think that as Councilwoman Martin said, that people are not, they don't understand that they actually are an advisory board and they should come up with ideas and we'll listen to them. I, I have observed over my last seven years, that people are very intimidated by city council and they feel like, I mean, the whole, their whole job, which they volunteered for, is to advise us about how well a certain department or sometimes a certain entity is working and what is needed between city council and those entities. And yet they feel, as, as Councilwoman Martin said, they feel like they're supposed to just be a discussion group. And there's nothing really wrong with that. You have to educate yourself. Anyway, I mean, with the sustainability advisory board, there are lots of different, people come in and speak and it's very educational, you learn about a lot of different things, very, a very broad array of things, which is really interesting. It, the difference between these, all these boards and commissions and things is so vast that I don't think we can come up with standards and predictability and all of us are different and yet all of us on this board are equal. We were all elected by the people of Longmont to represent them. And if people don't trust members of this council, then, I mean, if our own council members call each other irresponsible, I don't think that's very helpful at all. As far as getting, seeking anonymous feedback, we don't allow people to write us anonymously. That's why I think it's a ridiculous idea. It, it leads, anonymous messages and communications lead to people saying things that they would never have the courage to say publicly because they know they can get away with it because they're being anonymous. So I had, take great umbrage at the idea of anonymous feedback because we don't allow that in any communications with staff, with council right now. And there's a reason for that. I also think there's a huge difference between when I go to, a typical advisory board is like seven members and me. And I have no, if I'm a liaison, I have no voting power, as I said, none of us do. And there's a difference between that and something like Councilman Rodriguez serves on the planning and zoning board. That's very powerful and, and he gets a vote. But no, you don't get a vote? Oh, I thought you did, all right. Marcia Martin gets a vote on LEDP, don't you? No? Okay. Anyway, some of these, these, the, the problem is that when you have a vote and you're one of, say, with Colorado Municipal League, there are probably 150 people there. And you get the agenda two days beforehand and it's constantly changing until an hour before the meeting. I sit down with Sandy Cedar because I'm representing not city council, I am representing this municipality. And many times the municipal, and Sandy and the entirety of staff have already discussed these issues and come to some conclusion along with Harold, of course. And, and that's what they want me to represent. The Colorado Municipal League represents municipalities against the county, against the state. It's often against what I would choose as either an individual or as a member of this council. But what I'm supposed to be doing there is representing the city of Longmont, the staff and administration of the city of Longmont. And I'm doing that as a city council member and it puts me in a lot of very difficult positions. But it's not something that I am, I'm, I always vote the way that the staff and, and the city administrator want me to vote because that's my job to represent the city of Longmont. I do that after spending a couple of hours talking with Sandy. So it's not, it, it, that's a totally different role from when you're sitting down with 150 people or more. That's a different situation. And I don't, as far as having predictability and consistency, we all like predictability and consistency, but I, I don't think that's really something we should have a fetish about with boards and commissions. So I won't be voting for a resolution, but I think we should keep talking about this and figuring out a venue for us to have some kind of consistent comments, some consistent time when we can comment about these. Because I would like to hear what everybody else is doing.
I guess I would just, I just, I just, I just, just type in, I would just ask that if you're not a voting member of the board, I don't care what you do, just make sure that when you're expressing an opinion, when it pertains to me, just make sure that you're actually expressing my true opinion. If you don't like it, I don't care, just get it right. And many times I hear from other boards that, oh, so-and-so said the mayor and it's just wrong. So I have no problem with people disagreeing with me or criticizing me, just so long as it's factually correct. So anyway, Dr. Waters, if you want to say something else, that's fine, but.
Yeah, I'm going to make just one more time and, and I, and I'll let it go and I won't make a motion. It's clear where this would end up. But I did hear Councilmember Christensen make a reference to this council intimidating members of boards and commissions, her words. And then not wanting any anonymous feedback from boards and commissions. And people who might be intimidated by a board or commission like this, the one way we might get some honest, candidly helpful feedback would be for them to not have to put their name on it if they're already intimidated. That would be the whole purpose of gathering some anonymous feedback for the purpose of us getting better at what we do. I've heard Councilmember Christensen make reference to, we don't get better without data. Those, it's either the kind of data, not the only data, but the kind of data that, that people like us should be able to use to improve our performance. Whatever the comments are, yeah, my, the concerns, a fear of somebody saying something that's offensive, I, it's, it's hard for me to imagine if we structured a way to get feedback, we'd get a lot of offensive comments, offensive feedback. But we might get some comments that it would help us sharpen what we do that adds value to what they do. So I'll let it go.
All right, let's go ahead and wrap this up. The meeting concludes our session on, on liaisons. How about we all just do the best we can and we'll go nuts. All right, Mayor Protam, why don't you say something else?
Thank you, I'd just like to move that the meeting proceed past 11 o'clock if necessary.
A second, anybody opposed? All right, consensus, we're going to go past 11. All right, let's go ahead and just briefly, let's fly through this. Discuss and establish 2021 city council meeting schedule. I guess, Harold, I guess in the future, I guess it doesn't really matter, I won't be around. So anyway, go ahead, let's go ahead and go through the schedule. And basically, it's, we, it's always the same every year. If it's, if it's a week, it's election or holiday, we take it off, make sure we get two regular session meetings in there and fill in the rest of study sessions, shoot for four months. But let's do what we always do.
Thank you, Mayor, I think we can work pretty quickly through, there's just a couple of times where we do, would like some direction. So I'm assuming you all are looking at this draft schedule that I have got. So January 2021 would be two regular sessions on the second and fourth Tuesday, a study session on the first Tuesday on the fifth. The question is, would you like us to replace the second study session with an open forum?
Yes.
And if it's virtual? So last time we postponed.
Yes, is the answer, I believe everyone's going to say yes to that one.
Okay. And then an overarching question is, would you like us to begin again with coffees with council in January, even if they're virtual?
Yes.
Okay, so January is done, February is a pretty regular month. Study regular, study regular, no questions there, so I'll just keep going. In March, um, there is a possible NLC Congressional Cities Conference. A lot of councils seem, or some council, when they go fly out on that Tuesday, so the question is, um.
Cancel that Tuesday.
Cancel Tuesday, the ninth.
By the way, I'm just going to say it and speak up if somebody disagrees. I'm just going off the, what we've done for the last nine years. So yeah, cancel the night.
Cancel the night, that means we'll make the the 16th the regular session?
Mm hmm.
Would you like to cancel the meeting, the week of spring break, St. St. Brans Spring Break?
What day is that?
The 23rd, March 23rd.
It's two in a row, guys, yes? All right, yes.
Um, can I break in for a minute?
Yeah, go ahead, Joan.
Since that is two in a row, can we hold off on the NLC in case that is virtual? Or
It will be.
Uh, in case we can't fly, and then maybe we don't have to uh do two in a
Good idea, let's hold off.
So we will keep
Cancel it if it's, if it's in person, don't cancel if it's virtual.
Okay, so um, then a regular, we'll see what happens with that that conference, cancel the week of spring break?
Yeah.
And then the 30th will depend on how the ninth and 16th pan out. Okay?
Why?
Um, because potentially we'll need a second regular session two weeks apart from the other.
Correct, okay.
April is standard, study regular, study regular, no questions there. And we'll just keep coffee with counsel on the fourth Saturday, as we've done. Uh, May, study regular, study regular.
May the fourth, really, when I'm taking the, May the fourth off?
May the fourth be with you, Mayor.
Kidding, kidding.
In June, um, we would do a study regular. Uh, if we've kept your pattern, we'd make an open forum on the 15th instead of a study session. June 15th, would you like us to do that?
I also think we should get rid of the 29th if we, I mean, for for the council. I, we've canceled the fifth meeting in the past, anybody opposed to that?
The question would be, the week of the 22nd is possibly CML? And generally, you cancel that one for CML. And then the 29th, June 29th becomes a regular session.
Right.
So four meetings, but a five Tuesday month.
Right.
July, would you like to cancel the study session the day after Independence Day? So July 6th? Or hold that meeting?
That's not the day after, that's uh.
The second day after, sorry, yes, but the holiday celebrated is Monday, the 5th.
I'd, I'd like to cancel it, but what do you guys think? Anybody opposed to canceling July 4th? All right, we'll go ahead and cancel it.
Sorry.
That's what I mean, the 6th, okay?
And then uh, the 13th would be regular, the 20th a study, the 27th a regular. Moving to August, um, would be normal, study regular, study regular.
Cancel the 31st.
Cancel the 31st unless you'd like to also cancel um, the day after Labor Day in the following month, and it, maybe we hold that in case budget would like it.
That, well, Labor Day is the what, 6th?
The 6th, yes.
I say we do the 7th, cancel the 7th, what do you guys think?
Cancel the day after Labor Day?
Mm hmm.
And then keep the 31st if needed?
Yep.
Okay, the 31st of August, okay. Then the rest of September is uh, normal. The 14th would be a regular, the 21st a study, the 28th a regular. October is absolutely regular, study regular, study regular. I'm holding these sheets up for you, apparently, I think you can see these, sorry. November, the first Tuesday is Election Day, and it is a a council election year, so I would assume you'd like to cancel that one.
Oh, yeah, cancel that one.
You're going to celebrate, Mayor. Uh, regular on the 9th, a study on the 16th. And then the question is, would you like to cancel the 23rd for Thanksgiving week?
Yep.
And make the 30th a regular?
Yep.
We're almost done, December. So December, there's a couple, I did two options, one would be just do your normal schedule, study regular, study regular.
Cancel the 28th week of Christmas.
Can we just cancel December, period?
Cancel December.
Actually, yeah, some of us, depending on what we decide to do, don't care, but let's cancel the 28th.
So we could um do a regular, study regular, if you wanted to hold a meeting on the 21st, or if you did the same you did this year, two regular sessions on the 7th and 14th, and then cancel the last two weeks.
Let's count, let's, let's hold the 22nd in case we need it, but cancel, cancel the last two, have a 22nd meeting if we need it.
21st?
I'm sorry, the 21st, yeah.
So cancel the 28th for sure. Okay. And you, you want to meet on the 21st?
I guess I'm, or am I getting my dates wrong?
December 2021? Tuesdays is 21st.
Uh, maybe my calendar got jacked up, but I'm showing the 22nd of Tuesday, is it not?
Well, I relied on this calendar I downloaded, Mayor.
In the wrong year, Mr. Mayor?
I don't think so, I'm looking, I mean, January 1st, 2021 is a Friday, and so the December before that.
No, my phone, it's the same as well, Mayor, sorry, Google count, Google calendar is showing me Tuesday, December 21st.
All right, well, then I'm just going to assume it's the wrong year. But yeah, the last two weeks, cancel.
So we will go regular, regular, back to back, and then cancel to get your two regular sessions in. Okay, we will uh, I'll throw this back in cleaned up, uh, so you can look at it as an information item so that everybody has that clean copy. Thank you.
Yep, all right, great. Okay, let's move on to Mayor and Council comments. Any council comments? Councilmember Christensen?
Um, well, tomorrow is Veterans Day, and we won't get to have a parade. And that's really sorry about that. But I hope all the veterans out there know how much everyone appreciates their service. So, thank you.
All right, I don't see anybody else, but what I would like to say is just uh, um, I'm an unaffiliated former Republican. And as mayor of a small town in in Longmont, Colorado, I just want to stress how important it is that we continue to recognize and uh, and uh, support our democratic process for selecting presidents and other elected leaders. And I know I'm just a mayor in Longmont, but I'd like to congratulate President-elect Biden for his victory. And I would encourage our current president to accept the apparent will of the people. And I know my comments are going to upset a lot of people, a lot of my friends. But um, it was a close election, it's hard fought. But in our country, when you lose, you concede. And there is no, even if, even if there were sporadic instances of voter fraud, which there may very well have been, you legally cannot overturn an election based on individuals acting alone. Without evidence, you have no case. And uh, without uh, and I would just not only congratulate uh, President-elect Biden, would admonish our current president to concede, move on, and let what has happened continue to happen. A transition of presidential power so that we don't get stuck in a situation where we're confused and hurting. So congratulations, President-elect Biden. Councilmember Pec?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley, for those comments, I echo them. But I also am very proud to be an American, to be, live in the United States because it is one of the few places where we can turn our government in a peaceful, democratic manner, without a coup, without, and have everybody's voices heard. And I think that is a, that is a privilege, and we should never forget that, that we are very fortunate to have the opportunity to voice our opinion. So thank you very much.
Anybody else? Councilmember Martin?
Yes, I'd also like to commend you, Mr. Mayor, um, for very well chosen words. Um, I concur. Uh, and I think in the coming year, um, I would like us all to work on having a consensus of fact, if not a consensus of opinion. Because um, it, it's been frightening to me uh, to watch people argue about what the state of the election is based on completely inconsistent premises. If you will, separate sets of facts. Um, we have um, research and and news outlets such as the Associated Press in this country that um, are nonpartisan and indisputably uh, trustworthy. And I, I hope that all of the American public will remember that.
All right, anyone else? All right, that concludes Mayor and Council comments, City Manager remarks?
No comments, Mayor and Council.
All right, Eugene May?
To the Attorney.
Comments here, Mayor.
Beautiful. All right, guys, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that's a nay, so uh, that's a, that's a, that's not a nay, that's a big aye, we're out of here, it's late. All right, guys, I'll see you next week, thanks, everybody.